All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Joint Committee of the Hoyok City Council and the Hoyok School Committee to order. We have an agenda before us for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty, having arrived. I'd like to recognize the members present that are with us. I see from the school committee, we have school committee men. Collmore is with us. School committee woman, Rosalie Williams, is with us. School committee member, Millie LaFebbe, is with us. School committee member, Jay Willihane, is with us. From the city council is represented our city council president, Tessa Murphy-Ronbaletti, as well as city councillor Howard Graney. Myself, Kevin Jordan, pleased to be with you. I also would like to recognize our city councillor from Ward Two, Carmen Acasio, is also with us this evening. And I hopefully I didn't meet anybody, miss anybody. And on Zoom, we have, I don't see any members of either. But we have a number of esteemed guests, including our school superintendent slash receiver. We also have our mayor with us. We also have leadership from the finance department at the school department with us, members of the law department, and other invited guests. So we have packets before all of you. We have nine items on tonight's agenda. Without further ado, I would like to go to the take up the minutes of our November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Motion to take item one off the.
Yep, so moved, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Before you is the minutes of November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, at the last meeting of the joint committee. And it's hopefully, folks, if you've had an opportunity to review them, I know at least one member formally has said that they've had an opportunity at a minimum to review the accuracy of the minutes. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to receive and accept.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and accept the minutes. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. The minutes are approved. Motion would be in order to take the second item off the agenda.
Motion to take item two.
Okay, motion, is there a second to take item two off the agenda? Item number two is a communication from Aaron Linville, the Hoyok Public Schools, relative to the school rezoning update. This is a communication dated November first, two thousand twenty-two. And it's supposed to be in the packets as item number two, but I don't see an item two in my packet.
Nope.
That's the two, the hundred page report.
Hundred page.
Oh, it's the hundred page report.
Oh, right.
Okay, yeah, then, yeah, we wouldn't want to have that recopyed. So under discussion, this item made it to the, oh, thank you. Oh, I guess we have, hopefully, this is the summary version. Oh, no, we actually have a full copy version. All right.
Thank you.
So relative to this item, Millie or Superintendent Soto, would you like to address anything? Perhaps this was already discussed once. This looks like an older item that perhaps was tabled, or is this a new item coming in for the first time for discussion? It's dated twenty twenty-two.
Right, that's when the whole conversation began, my apologies.
Yeah, sure, just give the background, if you will.
That's when the whole conversation started about the rezoning, so this has been ongoing. Now, in respects to how it landed here, I'm not sure. Maybe that was discussed at the last.
Was it relative to the school bus issue, maybe?
Hmm, I wonder if it could because of the rezoning and how it changed the outlook on the busing and how it would be. That would be the only thing that I could think of why it would show up here.
Okay.
But I leave it up to the receiver.
If I can.
Yeah, Mr. Soto.
I just think that, you know, this was a communication that was sent to the, the full city council and the school committee, and there was some, a lot of discussion around it over the last years. We, you know, we had over, over sixteen hundred people provide input on our rezoning process. You know, happy to report, we had like a unanimous vote from the, from the school, not, not necessarily a vote, but we, we had unanimous agreement on the options that we had on the table for, in, when we were having our retreat last year. So this was more given to the committee as an FYI, and I think that at a school committee meeting, it might have been referred to take up further discussion, but it, it does seem fairly old, like we, you know, we're already past rezoning, we're, we're living it right now. You know, Sullivan is a middle school, we got Metcalf and STEM both as middle schools, and then we have six elementary schools. Before, prior to that, we had about nine different grade configurations in eleven schools. So really proud of the work that everyone put in and the input that everyone put in. It's been a rough year, and rezoning for sure has been a part of that. We moved a lot of students around, we moved a lot of staff around, so people are getting used to their school communities. But we, you know, we, we took as much input from the community as possible to make sure, to prepare for rezoning. And we built this planned, both in short term, to, to be able to accommodate our short-term needs, which was creating elementary, middle, and high school model, but also in the long term, in the event we were going to get a new middle school, which we now see that, that, that's a reality, we wouldn't have to go through an entire process again. So the plan would be, when we do get that new middle school, to move Metcalf Middle School students and STEM Middle School students into the new building. So it was a well-thought-out plan, I, I believe, and considered the opportunity for a new school, not to have to go through, you know, a whole rezoning process, redrawing the boundaries and all of that.
Yes, school committee member LaFebbe.
Because what I'm going to say, it might impact, so.
Okay, well, I just, receiver Soto, Dean Tech, will this be affected at all by the rezoning? And how many students are at Dean Tech? And what's going to happen with that, that school property?
Yeah, so Dean, the high school itself, the only, I think this rezoning is going to help, and the new middle school is actually going to help even more, because right now we have about three hundred students in the STEM Middle School that is co-located in the Dean campus. So if there's any, if there is any thoughts about expanding the amount of students we can receive in high school at Dean, you know, that kind of has to be put on hold until the STEM Middle School moves out. It was part of the reason that, that, you know, we did rezoning, like we, Dean has grown in popularity and, and, you know, as, I remember when I first got here, there was probably less than a hundred and fifty kids there, and it was very, not, not a lot, a ton of learning going on. And we've done, we've turned it around, implemented an application process, and now we have students on the waitlist that, that would love to get into Dean, but we can only take about a hundred and ten students in the freshman grade. When STEM leaves, there's, there could be an opportunity to expand that a little bit, but we also got to consider the impact on the high school. Because if we have, the more kids that go, the more kids that go to Dean, that means less students at, at Hoyok High North Campus, which means that has an implication on funding and, and what you can do for programming and things like that.
Just a follow-up question. Dean was built for six hundred students, from what I understand, and that included, you know, both the academic section and the, the trade section, or the, the, the other section. So, of course, I'm always looking as a, an ardent taxpayer in the city of Hoyok to find a location for the school department offices, which I thought that maybe if there would be room at a place like Dean, that certainly could be altered to house the school dependent, the, the school department offices. So I'm just, I'm just speculating, and I just want to see if you have a crystal ball to kind of inform me what's really, you know, the future of Dean.
Yeah, I think the future of Dean is more kids want to go there. There's opportunities to provide more programming. And to your point about the central office, I believe there's an item on the agenda tonight to talk about potential options for central office. You were here, when I was here back in twenty sixteen, we put a task force together to try to, try to, there were eight options that we laid out on, on, you know, and the recommendation of that task force was to purchase, for the city to purchase Fifty-Seventh Suffolk Street. At that time, we were paying over three hundred thousand dollars a month, I mean, a year, on, on rent. There is a plan to move out of Metcalf, and that building could become vacant if we don't use it for programming, because we'd be moving out of Metcalf, and those students would be moving into the new middle school. But right on the agenda later today, there's a, you know, there's a proposal to purchase.
I understand, I know what the proposal is.
Yeah.
And all the ramifications of it. I was just, you know, I've always been a pioneer that the city should use an existing building for their school department offices, that's all. Thank you.
Great, yes, Millie.
So in considering that this has been something that we've talked about long, over a year ago, if there's no further objection, a motion to, that we, this item was met?
Yeah, it's been complied. I think that's where we're going. I did have a couple more questions, but, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Second it.
Yep. I'll recognize that in a moment. We're, we're, we're getting there, though. I agree with where you're going with it. Did want to just ask, after one year of having had the rezoning, what are some of the takeaways from the rezoning that met your expectations? Any surprises? Anything that is a follow-up to, we obviously have this communication from November twenty-two. If you were looking back a year in hindsight, what are your takeaways about what worked well and what didn't work well from the rezoning? And the follow-up to that is, general consensus among parents at this point is overall content that the number of questions and concerns are down relative to rezoning?
That's a tough question to answer, but I'm going to do my best. I don't think that anyone prepared for how hard middle school, a big middle school is going to be, right? And middle school has been very difficult. So I've, I've talked to a lot of middle school parents, some of them are happy, and I've talked to a lot of middle school parents that aren't happy. I think overwhelmingly what we've seen at the elementary schools is, is positive. Like, I've heard a lot of really great things, because now you don't have, you know, kindergarteners and first graders riding the same bus with eighth graders, you don't have them exposed to the same things that middle schoolers are involved with. So our elementary schools are truly elementary schools now, pre-K to five. And the, you know, overwhelmingly, families have, have expressed that as a positive to rezoning, and we knew that was going to be a positive to rezoning. The, the thought behind having middle schools was to create a better middle school experience so that kids weren't treated like elementary school students, and so that they had access to opportunities. The one thing that I don't think anyone was prepared for was the staffing shortage and the amount of, of mental health and, and social emotional learning that a lot of our middle school students have, are involved with. So, you know, we've, we've seen behaviors that, that like, and I, you know, I hear this in other communities as well, so I don't want to say that it's unique, unique to Hoyok, but what is unique to Hoyok right now is that, for the first time in a while, we have like five hundred middle schoolers in the same building. Some would argue that that's, that was part of the reason why we moved to K to eight, pre, pre-K to eights, back when we did, was because middle schools were so hard. So, you know, we, we just got to get better at, at supporting our middle school students, I think, you know. I think it's mixed. A lot of families are not happy with their experience in the middle school, and, and some families are.
Yeah, Chair, Council, Committee Member.
Thank you. Yeah, when I went on the tour of both McMahon School and Donahue, and I met with the, the principals, and I had a tour of the school, you know, thank you for allowing me for that. And, yeah, this came up as part of the discussion. I think the overall comments were positive. You know, people hate change, okay, that's just human nature, so there were issues there with the teachers and the parents to, to some extent. But, you know, what I witnessed in both schools was very positive, and the, the children, the children seemed to be very well adaptable. I think the children are the, the ones that are the most adaptable, it's the parents and the adults that give the pushback. So just the feedback that I had was, was positive. Thank you.
Okay, good. Do you think it would be helpful if you did a survey again of the parents and just say, you know, hey, we, we, we did, you know, we've done this big change, and we're looking at it, you know, we sort of surveyed you before, and now that it's, it's actually happened, what do you think? You know, is, is there areas that we could do better? Did, did we meet expectations? Areas that we could get better, you know, just basic customer service type stuff like that? What, what are your thoughts on that? Would that be helpful to the leadership?
We do survey our families every year. We, we do what's called a panorama survey. And we survey our students, we survey our teachers, we survey our non-teacher staff, and we survey our families. And we just did a presentation to the school committee a couple of meetings ago on those results. You know, the, the biggest, the biggest thing is what I, what, biggest thing parents had to say is what, what we just talked about.
I see.
That student be, you know, they, they do feel connected to the school, you know, there's, there's positive things that they said in the survey, but the overwhelming concern that was brought up, that like poured through that survey result was, was student behaviors. And, and the need for, you know, to support students that are experiencing, you know, disengagement and things like that. So, you know, one of the, it's, it's certainly been a shift in focus for, of our leadership team. We just did a reset that started in February. We've been presenting to the school committee every month our referral data, so when a student is not engaged in their work and they need additional support, they, they go through a referral process, and they get some support from our student support teams. So we, we provide a monthly report to the school committee on that, and you, you see spikes, but what we saw in February was things started to taper down. We're going to continue to monitor that. One thing for sure is we need to, we need to work on our MTSS model, which has been, that's the multi-tiered system of support. So what do, what does everybody get in academics, social, emotional learning, and, and behavior? What are the expectations for everyone? And what are the systems in place when, when kids need support in those three areas? At, at a tier-two level, like when, when there's a little bit of, of dysregulation? And then tier-three, I, I think we, we have a lot of tier-three, we, and, and we, we focused a lot over the last three years on tier-one. What we really need to build out is the stuff in the middle. How, how do we get kids the support that they need? Instead of, you know, sending them out of district, or, you know, instead of special education being the option, we need to make sure we try everything so that students get the support they need among their peers.
Rosalie, did you, did you have a question?
Yes.
Rosalie.
I just have a comment. Changes are always hard. No matter what the changes are, someone is not going to be happy. So I think what we need to do is redo the survey and see, and do the balance. And if, if we win the top of the scale, then we probably would have to go with that. But changes are never easy, and so we all have to be patient. And anything we can do, of course, at the school committee, we, we're here for you.
Good, good. Well, anything else, colleagues? Are we good? Millie?
So I'm not, I just put here the question of maybe we want to put on the next agenda for the Joint City Council School Committee is the panorama survey that.
Oh, okay.
Was presented.
It's a good idea.
To the school committee, so that way as well, the city council is aware of the feedback that we're getting, but not only from families and students, but also from the staff. And it's not really about, you know, whether it's going in the opposite direction, then we change. It's more so about looking, here's where we at, where we're at, what can we do or put into place to improve the situation. So again, he talked a lot about mental health, which everyone knows, it's not a Hoyok problem, it's a national problem, right? And it's very limited when we look at mental health services, because there's not a lot of child psychiatrists. Therapists are few. So it's what do we do with other supports within communities that can help these students during their crises, as well as even just during regular, a regular day in school, kind of like, to meet their mental health needs.
Very good. Now you'll be able to send that over to Jeff, the results of the panoramas, or, and then this way, yeah, that's a great idea. Well, we'll put that on the next agenda. Jay?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just sort of people listening, those results are online, right? Right now, right? Aren't they live?
Yeah, for staff, and, yeah, they're, they're, they're available online, and we provided them to the school committee so that they can look through different schools. I think families have access to the survey just for their school, not for all schools. But, you know, the intent of that is for principals to look at it and like, hey, what are our teachers saying? What are our students saying? What are our families saying? And what are we going to do about it? It's not to, you know, we don't just do that survey just to do a survey. We do it so that principals can see it, and they can understand what the pulse of their building is and what people are, how people feel about it, and then that they can take action on it.
Thank you. Millie?
Which, I'm sorry, I do want to add to that, which now they, they've done what's called RRO, right? So they identified specific areas that they really wanted to focus on, and talked about, you know, what the concern is, or what, and then what the feedback was, and then what they're going to do, and who is going to be the person responsible in making sure that the goal was eventually met. But each school, through their own survey, identified the specific areas. Not every school had the same concerns that met a higher level, that needed quicker action. So that you will see as part of the panorama survey, because I believe we, we added that and we got those results afterwards.
Great. Anything else, anyone? All right, so I think I'd like to recognize that motion that item number two has been complied with.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Motion to take item three off the table?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take item number three off the table. Item number three is a communication from Anthony Soto, Superintendent of the Hoyok Public Schools. It's a letter regarding a petition from Mass DUC to release the city of Hoyok from state receivership. It's dated January second, two thousand twenty-four. I believe we all should hopefully have a communication. This is, maybe, and you know what, we should probably take up item number four with it, as well as item number seven. So if we suspend the rules to take up items three, four, and seven as a package, I think they're all related.
Second.
Okay, is there a second to that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number four is a communication from Jeffrey Riley. Jeffrey Riley is, I believe, now the former commissioner of DUC. He wrote a communication address to Mayor Garcia on December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, and he was quote-unquote "in receipt" of a petition to end receivership. And then we have the communication number seven on our agenda, which is the mayor's response to the Education Commissioner Riley's message on Hoyok School receivership. We'd always welcome the mayor if he wants to come in. Mayor, we're going to talk about these three items, and kind of the state of the state as all the players see where we're at with receivership. So colleagues, items three, four, and seven are now before us. Just by way of summary, we have a communication from Mr. Riley wherein he, I'll cut to the chase down to the last sentence, to quote-unquote "allow for those conversations to proceed." At this time, I am deferring a formal determination on your petition to end receivership. We have the mayor's response to that, which he's here, so I'll let him speak to that. And suffice it to say, the mayor was disappointed in the, in the, I think as all of us were, in the commissioner's response. And we also have basically a communication dated December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, which received our initial request, in that the school committee and the receiver had made a formal request to end receivership, and gave the reasons why they had petitioned to end receivership. So we now have those three items before us for discussion. Council Graney.
Yeah, the letters, they're, to say disappointing was, was probably a light, a light adjective to use. I thought that the, the letter from Commissioner Riley was pretty aloof. There was really no data in there, or any possibilities of timelines, when and where and how the receivership's going to end. And I thought Mayor Garcia's response was good, that, you know, he's, you know, attempted or, or trying to pin down this commissioner to, to end this receivership. And I think if we did a survey of the parents in the city of Hoyok, of the ones I've spoken to, I would say ninety percent to ninety-five percent would certainly want local control of their school system. And certainly, it's, 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 it's time-worn now, it's gone on long enough. We do a better job than the state. That's my perspective, and I think it's a perspective of the majority of parents in the city. But anyways, I, I thought Mayor Garcia's letter was good, I thought his response was good, and I thought Commissioner Riley just kicked a can down the road. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and just to kind of piggyback on that, just by way of teeing up the discussion, we're obviously not happy with this decision. We need, I think there's overwhelming public support to end receivership on the basis that this has been going on for eight years, and it's very nebulous where the goalposts are at this point. And number three point is, where does this all go? I mean, is this going to be a saga where some nice people are all going to be sitting in our chairs twelve years from now, and we're going to be talking about, hey, you remember, we've been in receivership for twenty years? Because I, I, I really kind of feel like that's where this is going. If, if something doesn't change at the state level, where there's actual like, here's your discernible goalpost, and we're going to get you past that, and what specific metrics are we gauging towards so that at any point in the game, you know, using the game analogy, there's an actual scoreboard, and you can see how you're performing. Is it zero-zero? Is it I'm down by thirty-four points, and it's in the fourth quarter? Where are we in this? I can't honest, and I'd love to hear from people, like, in the, in the spectrum of no way in hell are you getting out of receivership, to you, you, you should be buried in receivership, to the other end of the pendulum, which is, you're the most, you know, strongest community for local control, and you're a success. On that pendulum, or that spectrum, where is Hoyok today? And are we more towards this end of the promised land? Or are we more towards the doomsday? And I can't honestly give a, a true answer, and I'd love to hear from the mayor, the superintendent, to, and then wherever we are on that spectrum, we all know what, we all agree on the ultimate goal. What specifically do we need to do to help get us there? So if anybody else has any other opening thoughts, yes, Mr. Collmore?
Yeah, when, when we met with, not this, the whole board, but the commissioner met with us two or three at a time, and we discussed a lot of issues. But one of the issues came up was about, when this process started, they put us on level one, level two, level three, level four, then level five, and then they decided to take away that responsibility from the city of Hoyok. Well, when I, when we met with them, I said to him. Well, when I, when we met with them, I said to him, you know, this is well and good. We're starting to learn things that are going on in our school system through the commissioner. But you came here and you praised us on a lot of things that going on in our school system. Well, I said to him, well, if you're praising us, you're you're just saying to a few of us here. Why don't you come out and say, listen, we brought you to level five because you weren't performing. But now you're saying we are performing better. And he's very, very happy with it. I said, then why don't you tell this to the public of Hoyok? Why don't you put us on level four, five, and go back to the point where we really need some guidance from you on what really needs to be happening here in Hoyok? But I never heard anything back from him, whether he brought it to the State Board of Education or not. But my feeling is that could be a process. I would love, I would really love to immediately go back to the city of Hoyok. Because I don't think, and in fact, I'm gonna say, I know we're doing a much better job than the state wants us to do. They keep changing and changing things that has to be done. But it never comes to the school board on how we can get out of this.
Yeah, and I and I think what has been expressed to your point is some concerns is that no one ever has gotten out. Once you go in, it's a one-way tunnel thus far. And this is concerning. And then the other question is, is there is there a, as you come out, the true blueprint, is it like you're on, you could be, could they give us back but keep us on probation for three years or something where you're under monitoring or special? You know, the point is, it's like, they need to iron out the path more. Counselor Graney.
Yeah, just quickly, I was in the room, as was Mayor Garcia, at the auditorium, the War Memorial Auditorium, the date that the uh the uh State Board of Education voted. It was a seven to two vote. I believe it was seven to two. He can hear me out. And from my recollection, the two people on the State Board of Education, who had been actually been in the Hoyok Public Schools, who had actually surveyed the Hoyok Public Schools, were the two dissenting votes to keep the uh keep local control of the school here in Hoyok. So I had a con uh uh a notion that perhaps this was a done deal prior to all the hoopla that went on and so on and so forth regarding that. That that Mitchell Chester, who was the Commissioner of Education at the time, uh believed he wanted to put Hoyok into receivership for from some time. I don't, you know, allegedly. I don't have any uh hard evidence of that. Mayor Garcia was sitting in the room at the time. He he was aware, he was on the school committee, I believe, at the time. And uh to me, those people who had visited the Hoyok Public Schools, and I had been, I had been in in Hoyok High School for two accreditation systems, and the people around the state that came into our high school and came into our school, they said they would die to have a high school like we had. So the whole, the whole situation to me was kind of a slippery slope. I don't know, maybe Mayor Garcia can add to that. I don't know. But uh I thought it was a done deal.
Yes, Rosalyn.
This has been very discouraging. Um from day one, we said, okay, we're underperforming. What should we do to come up to snuff that you guys want us? It to me, it looks as if we, Hoyok is the underdog. Okay, we need an underdog. It's not true. We know it's not true. But we uh we have been so discouraged because we've been banging our heads against a blank wall for quite a long time. And we need to, they need to meet with us. You know, we asked, come and meet with our whole board so that we can talk about this, and it's very discouraging. Um I'm sick and tired of being where we are. I'm sure everybody is. So somebody need to come up with, tell us what we need to do to get out of receivership. No one's telling us. All they're saying is we're not performing. That's not gonna work. You know, so I've had it up to here. So all I can say is, tell us what to do to get out of the receivership. We've been asking this the whole time. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Mayor, do you wanna start or do you want to, uh Mr. Soto?
Yeah, I mean, I wanna answer your question. Where are we on the spectrum?
Yeah.
Like, we're very much on the seeing the light at the end of the tunnel spectrum. I honestly believe like
That's good.
Like, it's gonna happen. You know, we've heard from uh people from the governor's office. We've heard from the commissioner himself that like he he is willing to come to the table and talk about a transition. In fact, the mayor and uh vice chair of the school committee are meeting with the incoming commissioner. Uh I think Commissioner Riley still has a day on on his, I think his last day is the sixteenth. But uh uh Mr. Mayor Garcia is gonna be meeting with uh the team of Dessie folks to to talk just that. And and I think they're really serious about like, yes, we're gonna sit down with you and we're gonna talk about a transition. Um I know that that folks were were were, people were, I mean, my letter was pretty clear to the you know, the way the process worked was there was a petition. The next step in the process is the receiver has to write a response to the uh a recommendation to the commissioner on that. And then and then the commissioner had ninety days to respond from the date that the petition was filed. Um in my letter, I clearly recommended that we we begin a process to local control with with uh, you know, with the recommendation that it just be a well-thought-out process so that we're all ready for it, you know? Um I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think that swooping in and ripping the Band-Aid off uh when it happened had a positive impact on, you know, we we did lose a lot of teachers, a lot of good teachers. Um and and the process was really disruptive for families. Uh and I think that we should have learned learned something from that. Let's come up with a plan that is well-thought-out and so that when when the time happens um that that we're ready for it. So um you know, I I I'll I'll hand it over to to Josh. But bluntly, to answer your question, if we're like, no, this isn't gonna happen, or yeah, this is gonna, like, this is gonna happen. This is going to happen, and it's not gonna be ten years from now. It's gonna be happening in the very near future. We'll know more, I believe we'll know more about what the timeline could look like as the mayor continues, uh you know, to 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 work with the state on that. I'm sort of like in the middle of all this because, you know, I'm a I'm a local Hoyok guy and and you know, um uh I've been here working every day and born and raised in Hoyok. Um but I do work for the state, right? So uh feels sometimes a little bit like I'm too Hoyok for the state. And sometimes for Hoyokers, I'm too state for Hoyok. So I'm just trying to make sure that our staff are doing uh everything that they can to to meet the needs of our students and keep them focused on that work while while the mayor and and us try to figure out how we're gonna get to that point.
Thank you very much.
Anthony, you could never be too Hoyok for the state.
Mayor, your thoughts?
I I think uh Counselor Graney had a much better adjective than than what I had. It certainly has been aloof a little bit. Uh since I started this role, I recognize the position that we're in. There's no real blueprint. The state's in control. And so we've been able to sta- establish a partnership with the commissioner, uh communicated regularly and trying to develop that partnership in a way that helps us kind of together understand what it is we gotta do to navigate the next steps here. Uh he and uh, you know, the letter, the response, the interesting about the letter with Commissioner Ri- Riley was that it wasn't, it wasn't a no. Um I think there was a still a way he could have communicated what he wanted to communicate, but a little bit more concrete. And so that's where the frustration is because this whole time, the city of Hoyok has been this partner with the Commonwealth. And it just did it, the letter didn't feel like we were getting that respect in return as far as what that partnership looks like. Because the question is, the the bottom line is because there's no blueprint to all the points that Counselor Jordan was making there, says we we really don't know. There is no um, there is no path with objectives and a timeline to get out. Uh but what I do know is that, you know, I I kind of felt like there might have been, and it happens right here at the local level. It happens when, you know, when things aren't, when people internally aren't on the same page to people outside, kind of feel like something's going on at City Hall, right? So I kind of felt that at the Commonwealth level because we do have a governor that is very committed, wants a plan. And it sounds, it it just, my observance um felt like the commissioner and the governor just weren't on the same page. Um uh when that letter, when we got it from the commissioner and we responded first thing Saturday morning, um with ten minutes in between, I got a call from Secretary Tutwiler. And then about ten minutes, ten minutes later from Lieutenant Governor, um Saturday morning, the next day. And both Aaron Brunel and I, you know, were present and had that conversation with them. And so they offered some confidence, some assurance, um uh that um, you know, they're committed to Hoyok and wanna get us that plan. Um come, you know, a few short days later, we got this announcement that the commissioner was leaving. The interim commissioner, the interim incoming commissioner um did reach out and although at an interim level, um called and and Tutwiler called again after that to assure us that even though it's an interim, doesn't mean that we're just gonna sit there and just wait around until the next person comes around. That there is indeed an interest to work with Hoyok, to come up with a plan, a path, a timeline. We understand that we're not expecting, you know, and this has been communicated Riley too. We're not expecting control next week. I don't know, you know, it'd be nice, but we we understand that like that there should be some sort of transition. And being clear in what that transition looks like, and that means his team meeting with our team regularly and coming up with that plan. Instead of just us waiting around for a draft, we kind of need a little bit more of assurance. Um so there has been at the state level commitment to produce exactly that. Um uh tomorrow is my meeting with um the interim. And uh where the, we did have a retreat in speaking with the school board members. Last couple of meetings we've had, we've talked about like, you know, rather than meet informally, like these meetings now need to be in, like, if you're serious about working together to draft this plan together, we need you to, you or some member of his team to come to our public meetings and have those conversations. The school committee did create a um uh local control subcommittee of the committee. It's one of our newest committees that came out of the, out of the um out of the little retreat we had. And uh, you know, pretty much uh it, the directive to the committee, I don't wanna speak for the whole committee, but the way I look at it is we we're kind of empowering this committee to be the working group um that will work with someone from the Commonwealth uh to uh help kind of, you know, draft, develop that plan. There had, there was talk and some desire to create also a stakeholder group, um some sort of task force um of local stakeholders that can come to those committee meetings and just kind of, you know, close a communication gap, continue those partnerships and conversations of working together. I could tell you, you know, out of the communities that um are in receivership, you know, there is no blueprint. No one's ever came out of it. Um but considering like where we are, and and I tell folks all the time, I know there's a lot of spirited debates that come out of our, come out of our city. But we still manage to get things done. It's, you know, it sounds like, you know, I I there's, there's no toxicity hat coming out of the city of Hoyok. We work together. Um and, you know, the school board meets regularly. The receivers, the receiver actually comes to the meetings every month, meets with the school board ever since we weren't, got into receivership so that, you know, we're we're, we've done this charting the course, um took some training and I think we're looking, we're probably taking, doing some more, I think. I think Mildred can speak more to that. Just because we got a lot of new members that haven't, that were never on the school board when we were in local control. So there's a, there's a learning curve on our end too. So there's some train-up that's taking place with with our our existing school board members. So we're doing all these good faith efforts to show the Commonwealth that we are a responsible government entity ready to, you know, take over local control. Quite specifically because, um and this is where the big debate is, is uh whether or not it was worth going into receivership to begin with. Um you know, the the data shows that we're, haven't really seen dramatic improvement, stagnant. Um uh so now it comes down to the question around, you know, the um the 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 threat to our democracy, right? Like, if if things aren't improving better in 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 your hands, the 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 outcomes, then what's the difference between our local government and you guys? So it, and you know, I, my conversations with Commissioner Riley and folks from the state and everybody actually is like, the situations in our school districts as far as outcomes concerned is nobody's fault. It's not the state's fault. It's not the local government's fault. We're Gateway City. We're dealing with a level of quality of life challenges that has all sorts of social determinants of health issues. And the school, this kids are going to school with that. And we're expecting, we're expecting the school department to clown Mount Everest in their shorts and t-shirts, right? Like, there there's, there's a lot of challenges that 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 um kids are bringing into the, the schools are just not, it's not their job to deal with. And so this grand experiment of receivership, I think we, the the Commonwealth, if they really wanna help gateway cities, there's a different conversation to be had about how the Commonwealth is gonna support those communities to close service gaps in neighborhoods that are impacting the quality of life of our children that are going to our schools with those issues, right? Like, Anthony and I were going over some data. The common, the city of Hoyok is number three comparatively to all school districts in the Commonwealth per capita when it comes to children enrolled in our school district who are experiencing some level of homelessness. Per capita, more than Springfield, more than Boston, more than Worcester. Can you imagine like what those kids are bringing to the school district and what we're asking our teachers to do? Um and so those are some systemic issues that I think that are going on in our city that the state had a hand in building and creating that I think we need to focus on opposed to taking over districts um from schools and blaming local communities that weren't, that were responsible for not producing the outcome. So because of that level of data and and conversation, coupled with, my argument is coupled with, you know, our our local government, we have it together. Um we're not divided. We're not, not present. Um uh you know, that there's no reason why we shouldn't continue to practice um democratic control when it comes to oversight of public resources, right? So um I know that the the governor's completely on the same page. Um uh could, it, there might have been some disconnect there. Um but I can tell you that after that, you know, like after that, from that moment until the time Commissioner Riley left, there has been some assurances that like, yes, no, you deserve a plan. You deserve a timeline, and we're gonna work with you in that. And so I'm hoping that by tomorrow, I'll have something, after tomorrow, something much more. I need something in writing. I need something much more concrete to 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 continue to show my community that I feel, that I trust and continue to have confidence in what I'm being told. Um so as soon as I get more information, certainly we'll share it with everybody and people will know. Um but that's, that's, that's where we are right now, and I don't anticipate. I mean, again, we don't know for sure until we get some real movement, but you know, I don't anticipate seeing this happening for another ten years. But you know, until we see that real concrete um one-page or in front of us um with a MOU or commitment, uh you know, I guess, you know, it's still in the air until we know for sure.
Right. I, yeah, just, oh, go ahead, Holly.
Just quickly, just to reiterate what the mayor said too. We have a highly mobile population here in Hoyok, and we have a high incidence of special ed kids that uh I'm sure Comis- uh Superintendent Soto would probably know, probably twenty-eight to thirty percent of our kids are are special ed. They have ed plans and so on and so forth. And the benchmark for the state taking over was the MCAS test. And now they wanna, they wanna do away with the MCAS test. So, you know, we don't know. We're in a state of limbo, but thank you.
Right, um I really appreciate the remarks of of both of you. One, um couple of points, and I'm glad you raised the Couple of points, and I'm glad you raised the, the argument is not lost in the conversation is the fact that there is a general longstanding ethos of the American experience, which is local control of one's schools. That's, I mean, from the foundation of the country, this, and to not have that has got to be something very serious awry. And that it's that we're so imperiling these children, basically, that you have to take it away from us, okay? And when that's not occurring, or said another way, the new steward, the state, who is now in charge and has been in charge, you know, at some point when you're in charge and you have a task, and you're in charge for one year, two years, three years, eight years, at what point do you have accountability that you're, that you take it away from us? That, and it's now in your hands, and you have not done better, some argue worse, okay? Then who holds you accountable? And the question is, isn't that in and of itself evidence? That it should go back to local control and that this be a collaborative relationship? One where, I mean, there, even if we got local control back, we already know there is massive regulations at the state level. They control the purse strings in a big way, right? Like I think 90% of the school budget is funded through the state, right? So they have all these levers of power and control even when they don't have state receivership that I don't understand why they can't use those levers to have to go to the extreme measure. And I think it's proven now, after eight years, I think we can definitively say, we're no better off under their leadership. And as a result, they need to hold themselves accountable. And I think the way you hold yourself accountable is to say, you go back to local control, where it always should have rested, and do this in partnership with us, not as a takeover. And I think when you, the reason we don't get specific metrics, and I think the reason they don't give these type of specific plans is it enforces accountability. Because if they say, here is the path, do X, do Y, and do Z. And if X, Y, and Z happen, then you get the keys back, right? But the problem with that, of course, is they can't do X and Y and Z themselves in their own leadership. And these are allegedly the great experts from Boston who know all, see all, you know, the Wizard of Oz, if you will. And they don't have the answer, it would appear to me, otherwise, right, it would have happened, right? And so that's what leads many of us to be skeptical. And I think the other thing that you can articulate, and one of the questions I want to see is what role do we as citizens in the city can do to support our leaders who are making these efforts? What is the role of the city council in the school committee in advocating this, with the state rep and the senator? How do you see this all playing out? Is this a two-year path? You know, if you, I mean, I know it's uncertain, but if you had it the way you, you know, if I gave you each a magic wand and you could make it happen in this way, do you see this as, okay, a two-year plan where they make the announcement and then it says, you know, this next school year would be the last year, so maybe in September of 25, you could have this type of control back? And like, what's our plan? Like what's even our quote unquote ask of them? I'm interested to hear your perspective on that. And if you were making a plan, like what would you build into the plan?
So the interest, the interesting thing about receivership, not necessarily that they're bringing wizards to the table, but because receivership has a level of flexibility to restart things that we might be, not be able to do when we are in local control. So there's been a lot of like changes, but in the, in these eight years, because all this control was under the direction of the Commissioner through the receiver, through the receiver, through the Commissioner, we haven't, our board hasn't been in practice of what it means to be in control, because there's a level of responsibility that at the board level that they have to make decisions and, you know, negotiating contracts, transferring, putting together the budget, transferring funds around, and, you know, other things that, there's some executive level responsibility to keep up with the expectations of services in the school department. So I think, you know, when we're talking about what does that look like and reasonable day and whatnot, it all depends on how ready our school board is. We're ready to transition. Getting it next week, we don't know if we're that ready. Uh, because there's, there's still some things that we need to put into practice. And the school board slowly but surely has been on its own. Like for example, the policy committee, you know, they've been acting, you know, as if, like if we were already in control, and it's all recommendations at the end of the day, the receiver, who comes to the table all the time and listens and, you know, does take action and whatnot. But like, again, it's in control, what does that mean? Putting in your order, sending it to committee, having those discussions, bringing it back, making sure we're not making decisions until you get the vote, the body, all that stuff. And, or when you are talking about it, talking with legal, you know, all those little intricacies that are involved. So we're gonna have to, when we are working together, assess how ready our school board is. I mean, this is just my personal opinion. And then map out, okay, you know, what level of training or, or practice? Maybe we give a little bit of control, maybe we give, you know, if we're talking about transitioning, you guys have now the responsibility to manage this component and then start transitioning from there as they, as they learn. So depending on how quickly like we can, you know, is, my, in my opinion, I think will determine how quickly we can get back into local control. So if we're ready by day one of school start of 25, I think you said?
Yeah.
Perfect, great. Uh, maybe not. So that's why we, we need to have a conversation with the leadership at the state monthly at our table, like partners, trying to figure this out so that we have a smooth transition to control.
Anthony?
Yeah, I've been, I've been listening a lot and I, and please, I don't want, I've, I've been hearing about like no progress at all in the eight years, and I just, I feel an obligation to recognize all the good work that has been happening, that our teachers have been, you know, putting in. Like we have made a lot of progress, not on, not on MCAS results. Like that is clear as day, that is an accurate statement. But a lot of the work that we've done over the last, you know, that Hoyoke has done over the last eight years, because, you know, it's, it's not like someone's at the state saying, hey, you have to rezone, or you have to go after a middle school building. Like the biggest thing they did was they hired a, a receiver, right? And, and I think they hired a really good one, and, and Dr. Schreik. I think in fact I read that he was like the superintendent of the year. Just, just got awarded that. But a lot of things that, that he put in motion were really good. You know, we, we've been able to increase the graduation rate, we've been able to decrease the dropout rate. We've been able to double the number of pre-K seats that we have. We've been able to put systems in place, like financial control systems that didn't exist. We used to have paper timesheets, that's out the window. We, we never had access to like true student data. Now we have, so these are all good things. I'm not gonna say that that's a result of, of receivership, please, don't, don't take it that way. But to say that like there has been no progress over the last eight years, I feel an obligation to.
No, I think in fairness, Anthony, I think the concern of many when people make that comment, and I've, I've reflected that comment here a moment ago, was not that we haven't made progress, we're always making progress. The point is, our, we're not making progress as a result of receivership. That there's a direct correlation from, we handed the keys over to this new leadership team. And as a result of that, things that wouldn't have otherwise happened, happened. So that's the criticism, is that, that this new, that somehow with local control, X, Y, and Z was not happening, that was holding our performance back. But in light of the new leadership, this whole door of new things, of, of new improvements happened as a result. So could you maybe address that, that, that's the concern?
Yeah, no, I, and I, I just wanted to name some other thing, but you are absolutely right. And I want to recognize the school committee too, because like to, to Josh's point, they've been at the table every month, and some of these big decisions that we have, we've had to make, like they've, they've been, you know, guiding a lot of the process as well. Yes, ultimately the receiver's been the decision maker. But a lot of these good things that I'm talking about, it, it, it's people here. Like we are doing the work, right? So.
But that, that's exactly the point.
Yes.
Like.
That is my, that's the point I wanted to make.
Whether it's local control or state, we're still gonna get the work done. It's just a matter of principle, of the democratic value of being able to make decisions locally when it comes to public resources. Cause they took over the district because we weren't performing MCAS results. Doesn't mean we weren't doing much on our own. I mean, we introduced locally the dual language program and how successful that wasn't done under the state. That was underdone locally. And so we, I think we could have still made the same level of progress locally with you. Then we could have, you know, well, you know, with this, with the team that we have here, but not being in this state control umbrella. We need a, the principle of, of, of having local control, the ability to self-govern is what we value in this country. And, you know, if, 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 if I'm gonna support receiverships because there's clear reasons that we're doing wrong, that they're gonna improve, right? Like, but during the eight years, I haven't seen those, there is no clear reason, like the scores are stagnant if not, if we're using MCAS to measure who gets control over what.
Yeah.
Um, so it's just the principle of, of, of control is, is what we're fighting for here.
So if we're thinking about it now, eight years back, if we're totally objective, can we point to the whoever, I don't know whoever this fictitious person is, who might be the strongest advocate in Massachusetts for receivership of Hoyoke? I don't know who this person is, but whoever this person is, they said, you know what? X, Y, and Z happened over the last year, and only because we were in receivership did X, Y, and Z improvements happen. Are there any of those? And the question will then be, how do we make sure that we don't slide back from those alleged gains because of receivership when we do get local control back? So how do we know? So I guess I'll start with my first half of my question, which is, what has happened under receivership that wouldn't have otherwise happened? That they made happen, that has actually had a discernible improvement in the schools in eight years?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's subjective, right? Like this, it's not black and white. I mean.
Well, let's take it in the light most favorable to receivership. Like, what's something you think, or maybe there's multiple things, that actually there was some game changers as a positive for receivership?
I think one of the game changers was that, that contributed to our, our graduation rate and our dropout rate was really reimagining Dean. And Dean was a dumping ground. Dean was where like people that, you know, Dean was, we don't want these kids in high school, let's, let's put them over at Dean. And I'm, but, but I also would say that like the school committee could have came to that conclusion, right? That, that's why it's black and white. But that is an example of like a systemic problem that needed to be addressed. And you may have been swimming against the current, right? To, to protect like the crown jewel of Hoyoke, which was, you know, Hoyoke High School. I feel now we have a waitlist for Dean where like, uh, kids, and we have opportunity academies where, where we are actively trying to reengage kids that are at risk of dropping out. And, and that means that we're creating, we've created an alternative program because a, a traditional, a traditional high school setting. And, and I'm, I'm answering your question, but, but I'm not answering it in the way that that only happened because of receivership. So like, I'm, I'm just telling you something really good that happened, but I, I can't tell you that that only happened because of receivership. You know, that could have happened locally, like we could have did that locally if we all came to the consensus that we need to do something about Dean and not make it a dumping ground, right?
Right. So I guess that's kind of the way I would frame the discussion when you're speaking with the state. Like they should be able to say, well, you know, you're in receivership and it's been eight years of receivership, and I can point to A, B, and C, things are better because you're under receivership with us. Because if that's not true, then how do you keep making the argument that, you know, whoever the decision maker is, to keep us in receivership then? Because if there isn't A, B, and C to point to.
To, to your, right. Well, that's why I, I, in my conversation with Riley, it's like, in the Commonwealth, like don't beat your guys selves, don't beat yourselves up over the head because we're on improving. Like there were some, and, and this can be up for debate, um, because, you know, it's, it's political depending on perspectives. But, you know, I, I for one do believe that there were some real systemic issues that were, uh, some of the changes that have been implemented. So it was being nice about it, I, I don't think we've been, I don't think we would have succeeded zoning. There were a lot of angry teachers, and depending on who your connections and relationships were, it's election season can discourage you from doing rezoning, right? Like there's some systemic things internally that, things that we, that were done with Dean. You know, um, when you have received, there were flexibility that the state has that. So there's things that we can point that and say like, guys, like, you helped, thank you. Like I'm not, I'm not blaming you, I'm not, what I'm telling you is, we can take it from here. Like we appreciate you helping us because I'm sure we would have had a difficult time. We had some soul searching happening here too, and a lot of changes with the former administration, incoming, like we, we get it, right? And, but we got our stuff together now, we appreciate your help, we can take it from here. That's the argument I'm trying to make, like, um, and, and then also just letting the governor's administration know like, and I, and I've had this conversation with Representative Duffy, you know, considering this experiment the last eight years, and, and, and Counselor Jordan, you, we've had financial level discussions or lack thereof support from, when it comes to gateway cities, I think that this is evidence of why the state needs to have some sort of intervention and how gateway cities or inability thereof to keep up with those critical services that are impacting neighborhoods, right? Like if we're gonna partner with the Commonwealth to, to help vulnerable populations, then we need the Commonwealth to bridge these gaps here that are creating these quality of life issues that we're having a hard time taking care of on our own. Like if we're gonna be serious about improving outcomes in our school district, it's, it's not taking over schools, saying we could do it better. It's, oh, wait, there's issues happening at the neighborhood level, what can we do to help improve outcomes so that these kids aren't going to school with those, those issues? So, um, but there, there's definitely things to point at to say, you've been helpful because of the flexibility the state has to just do change. But certainly like, you know, an argument to be made here to say, all right, we, you know, we can certainly take it from here.
Counselor Grant?
Yeah, just quickly, once again, I hate to monopolize, but I have absolute confidence in our school committee, they are terrific people, locally elected. Just to give a concrete example of what Hoyoke is all about, and probably nobody from the State Department of Education has ever seen it. All you have to do is see one of Mr. Todd's plays in the, in the summertime of what the Hoyoke High School students can do in their musicals on stage. These things are world class. I've seen college plays, college musicals that don't even compare with what our kids do at Hoyoke High School. That's just one concrete example. And that's what the local people can do. And, 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 I mean, they just do a terrific job. The kids, they all buy into it, it's, we've all seen the plays, we've all gone over the years. It's been a terrific experience for the community, for the kids. That's just what we can do here in Hoyoke, and that's only one example. Thank you, there are many others.
I will always fight for Dean. All of the schools belong to us, but people's ignorance was, oh, anytime they go to a tech school, that's one step from jail, which is wrong. That is not the way you think. Both my sons graduated from Dean, I sent them there so they could get skills, they ended up getting skills. They did all right. So when people say, oh, a tech school, that's one step from jail, that's the wrong way to think. And Dean has been thrown under the bus for, for years, and it just really gets my goat because it's not true. A tech school is a good school. Always remember you're a knight. That's a great school. Dean Tech, don't look back. These are great schools. So we need to speak up when people are throwing them under the bus and saying wrong things. We need to kind of like get in their face and say, you know what? I beg to differ. So that's what I'm all about. All the kids belong to me. I'm the mother of the group.
Millie?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I wa- I was just gonna make the, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Okay, yeah, yeah, we perfectly understand. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's more important. Um.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you for coming. We really appreciate it. Um, I guess just to make a de- you know, devil's advocate argument, if the concern is that, you know, the school committee, if we give the power back, then they're gonna make political decisions as opposed to what the tough decisions that, you know, the kids and the schools need. People can just call, I guess, you know, the point is people just call you up and, you know, you'll vote no on something because of politics. I mean, it's a political process, right? So, you know, the concern is, you know, we've got some tough decisions that maybe have to be made. And is it possible that the state could, you know, something to think about in the future is, you know, why don't they watch the school committee meetings and and engage with the school committee or have someone who is a liaison with the school committee, making sure that, you know, they're doing their homework and they're making informed decisions and that they're making. Now, it may not be this decision always or the outcome that the state wants, but it's a reasoned decision. Like this is what deliberative bodies do all the time. There's decision A or decision B. Reasonable people can disagree what A and B are, right? And so you can come to different outcomes. Um, that doesn't mean one decision's unreasonable to the other. As opposed to everybody knows A is suppo- should happen, but B becomes the outcome. Well, that's a different scenario, right? So, um, maybe we could have that. And I I again, I I find the school committee members are very civically engaged, very thoughtful. And I think everything I've ever seen from them is, um, and school committee members, you know better than I, you know, um, want what's best for these kids and are not afraid to make the decisions that are necessary to do what's right for the schools. So having said that, if that's the concern, we need to get over that hump and get that message back to the state that, you know, they're they're not afraid to make the tough decisions. I don't know, Millie, you wanna you wanna weigh in or Jay or Rosalie on Ron on on that point?
Did any one of you wanna go first and then I'll say my my piece? Mr. Collmore, do you have something you wanna share?
I understand what you're saying.
Hmm.
But if we recommend, the school committee recommends certain things to, uh, happen in our school systems, we discuss things with the receiver, which is very important. And but we don't have discussions with the people in Boston about these problems. They don't come forward and tell us, you know, you did something the other night that we're not in favor of or something like that. We would like to hear from them on what their concerns are.
Right, you need the feedback.
But we we don't, I don't get that.
Right. But would you think, would you be comfortable, as many years as you've served on the school committee, would you be comfortable if the state said, we'll give the power back to you, but we wanna consult with you on different important key decisions? Would you, would you and the other school committee members be comfortable with that?
In my opinion, I'm just, I'm talking on my opinion.
Yeah.
I think it would be wonderful.
Okay.
I think it would be the best thing that ever happened, that we all work together to solve the problem that comes before us.
Right, right. And and that's what I'm suggesting. Jay, what what do you think about, uh, some sort of a role? Like if they gave the power back to the school committee?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're on, we're all on record at our prior prior meetings, you know, having some sort of a partnership, you know, like I said, I don't feel that the state is gonna come in and flip the switch. And, okay, here you go. It's gonna be some sort of a partnership either over time and stages, you know? So that's that's really what what we're looking for right now.
Did you have anything else to share? Okay.
I I have a lot, you guys are all saying everything that I'm I've been feeling for a while. But, um, one of the things that I've I've been able to see just in, like the mayor was saying, talking with other school districts and, you know, looking at the theme of receivership, um, throughout the state, you know, receivership in and of itself is supposed to be temporary. And it it hasn't been temporary, even when a community like Springfield was put into receivership. It eventually got out of receivership. Um, not school wise, municipality wise, but, um, you know, uh, so that that's one part. But I've I've just seen talking to other districts in similar situations as Hoyoke. We are very far ahead of other communities, um, in receivership in that we, I mean, other communities, Southbridge, for example, does not have a joint school city council committee that meets and and tries to work together with, uh, the city legislature and 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 even the school committee itself, you know, they don't, doesn't sound like they have a great relationship with their receiver. Um, and, you know, I I that, the more that I learn about other relationships in in receivership, I, well, it gives me a lot of hope that we're, we are on the right track. And I believe what, um, the mayor and and, um, uh, Anthony have been saying is just, you know, I do feel like we're close, but I also worry that, um, there isn't a plan to get us out. So, um, and I, it's, it's just wild to me that, um, we don't really have any path forward. So I appreciate everyone's thoughts tonight and and the transparency and, um, you know, I I I think there's more to come from us and this committee, so I appreciate everyone's insight.
Really, you wanna wrap us up on this?
Okay. So, um, thank you, everybody. I heard everything that everybody has said. Um, so just to kind of be clear on this, um, it's been two years, um, when the school committee, a subquorum, had met with the commissioner, um, kind of talking about what would be the steps to get out. Cause obviously, as as people are aware, there's nothing in the law that indicates how it's measured. Although it will say it's based on a turnaround plan. So here's my opinion. The turnaround plan is based on student academic performance, correct? And so if an individual, or in our case, the school committee, does not have the power to make those decisions, then you can't base that on my performance as a school committee. Um, the outcomes of the students' academics. So if we're looking at MCAS scores, that shouldn't be reflective as as to why we're not getting our districts back. Number two, chronic absenteeism, as everybody's aware, is now gonna have like a higher point system. And that will also be used to measure whether districts are gonna be taken into receivership. So in ours, I'm sorry, what?
Uh, the commissioner made that proposal, but the
It was, it was.
It the it got voted down by the board.
Great. Because if we look at Hoyoke, right, and we have the Opportunity Academy, and if we look at chronic absenteeism, it's at ninety-four percent. Well, guess what? Although it's something great that we're doing to get students reengaged and also, um, prevent more from dropping out because we're giving them an alternative pathway, it's impacting our chronic absenteeism rate. So we're at what, in the forty percent? When ninety-four percent alone comes from the Opportunity Academy. So it's like, it's a good thing, but again, it's a bad thing that impacts us.
Mm-hmm.
So in, if you're looking at what, um, has come in the past year, um, I'm sure you've all heard of the Thrive Act. Okay. The Thrive Act also addresses, um, receivership and how there shouldn't be receivership at all. Um, it should be more towards providing the necessary resources to the districts in order to meet the needs for the students, which as Mayor Garcia had spoken a lot on, it's not just within the school. It's you gotta look at the city and the community that they come in. So you asked, how does city council help and part and how can they help, um, the school committee? And in working on this, it's about what are you doing for your own city? That's addressing the needs for everybody within the city. If you're making those positive, um, and, um, effective votes to ensure that all residents, it's equitable across the board and you're meeting the needs, that's gonna trickle into the schools. But if we start having where it's only one section's getting more than another, that's where the problems lie. So it's working together to ensure that all residents are getting their needs met. So housing's a big thing, right? Food insecurity is another, um, big issue. Right now, mental health supports is a big issue. So what are we doing as a city to address those issues that as well travel with the student into the school? So if you're looking at what is the way to get out of receivership, then I would come back and say that the goal should be based on what is the school committee doing? So if you look at what our role can be now, which is really just the watchdog role, but we also are held accountable to the people who elected us and put us into those seats, right? So my watchdog role would be, we're looking at policies to make sure that they're equitable. We created a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee that works with, um, the director of diversity, equity, inclusion, and the the task force to look at the student handbook, to look at policies, um, to look at the different areas, also staffing, um, to make sure that we're we're, um, providing an equitable education for all students. Um, so that then, that should also be reflective of the our performance. So looking at us and saying, you know what? They went above, they created a diversity, equity, inclusion, um, committee, and they're looking at this. They've made recommendations. Now, whether the receiver takes it or not, we can always hold the receiver accountable to our constituents, our residents, and say, this was something that was gonna improve for our students. Because you always gotta make sure that who we're here for is for our students. So they should be first in every one of your decisions. So if they decide no, and we know that that would have been something positive and impactful to improve the lives of the students and their educational experience, then we can hold them accountable. And that's how you have now documentation to say why the state is not effective. Right now, you have that, they haven't moved much with the MCAS, right? But they're still basing that on our performance as school committee members. So if you look at the law, it says that they have to, that when the state takes over, it's to make significant improvement within the first turnaround plan, which was three years. The first three years. And obviously, that wasn't met. Went into a five year, that wasn't met. And now we've got our our next turnaround plan. So, um, we really need to advocate more towards the performance of the school committee versus the performance of the students when we're creating a plan to transition. And the recommendation was always transition. And we we felt that taking policies as one of the very first things, not only does it impact, um, where our thought process is in addressing all the, all the the concerns within the district, um, for our students, but I think that will show that where we're focused on is to ensure equitable, equity across the board. Um, then eventually, because one of the biggest things that I doubt they would give up real quick quickly would be the budget and finance. But if you can prove yourself throughout along and still with that partnership. So that was our goal from the very beginning. Um, and I was hopeful that because we use the word transition and not give it back to me tomorrow, um, that he would have approved it much easier. Um, but I guess that didn't happen. So I'm hoping that when they have their talk tomorrow with the, um, interim commissioner, um, that the point is made more based on, um, the the performance of the school committee, which is, uh, the mayor said, um, the training. So, um, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, um, they are the ones that provided us the trainings. Um, it was like a charting the course one to one. But there's also other areas, um, that we're creating there at MASC to really be geared towards districts in receivership, because we wanna make sure. So now I'm speaking with my MASC hat. Our goal is to, um, make sure that we're there for the districts that are in receivership and how we can support them and guide them through that process and through that transition when it happens or what we can do to help them get into the transition. Um, so I've had the opportunity to to meet Southbridge. Um, I've been in talks with Lawrence for for quite some years already, um, for the, over five years, and had the opportunity of going over there. It is, it's completely three districts, three school committees that are not all performing at the same level. And it's because the level of involvement between the school committee and how receptive the receiver slash state is. Okay, that's the impact. And it's not the fault of the school committee because they are just as much passionate about getting back that local control. We have been very fortunate that the, I'm gonna speak for two of them, that we have received of the three, um, have been very receptive and have worked very well with the school committee. So, um, I honestly feel that we as Hoyoke together, you wanna make an impact and you wanna get the state listening, then we need to start teaming up with Lawrence. We need to start teaming up with with Southbridge and together go up to the state and say, we want our districts back. Make noise.
Mm-hmm. All right, well, um, let me turn my microphone back. Uh, I thought we've had a really good discussion here, um, and, um, we have some other items, obviously, on the agenda that we need to attend to. So, uh, if there's a motion that we consider items three, four, and seven as complied with?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, so moved, okay. Move to take item eight out of order? Thank you. Second that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, both so moved. We have an order, uh, introduced by Counselor Ocasio that says, ordered that someone who's in charge of school buses to come in to explain to parents why kids are not getting the buses and if they are going to get them. So, um, Counselor Ocasio, can you kind of touch on some of your concerns here? It sounds like you're concerned that some kids and are not getting certain school bus service that you think they should be getting. You wanna just go over that for us?
Hi. Um, the reason why I found this order was because I spoke to a lot of, um, families, our parents, because I do the Morgan School, the the walking bus group. And, um, some of the parents are confused about it. You know, there's some mom don't know even why that, you know, the buses were removed. And, um, they're concerned because when we walk, when we walk the the kids from High Street, right, down Sargent, the the first of all, the the sidewalks are not leveled, you know? The branches from the trees are like, like in our way when we we have to like maneuver around, you know? So the kids won't trip over, right? Um, down that strip, I found two needles. Um, there's still a lot of, um, big candles. I don't know, somebody dropped, maybe left these, a big bag of candles, so they huge candles, and they still there, they've been there. I've been doing the school bus, the walking school bus like for a while now, and it's still there. You know, I had to pick up the needles, you know, because we have to be coming down that route and we have little ones. You know, they can trip and and fall right into it or whatever. There's also a lot of glass, you know? So, um, I I I mean, I can't be coming down with the kids in in the day. It's a dangerous situation for them and they're little ones, you know? And then we also come down, I mean, it was coming down when it started snowing. We was coming down with these little ones when it rained, you know? I mean, they don't choose to to be walking, you know? It's because of the zone changing or whatever. I don't know what happened, you know?
Right.
So that these little ones are walking down, you know? I don't mind the the bigger ones, but the little ones, you know? I mean, we have to like little like hustle them from point A, hustle them to point B, to to make it on time to school, you know? And like, we take our time with them. You know, and like we take our time with them, because we, we don't want them to trip, you know, and they got little feet. But it's, it's, it's a challenge for them, it's a challenge for me, you know, going up the hill to get them and coming back down with them, you know? And it's cold and, and windy and it's raining, you know?
Well, that's, that's, that's good of you to do that, that's, um, que- question, I know we had this as the walking school bus situation relative to getting over to Kelly too, and that was the, the solution. I wanted to ask, um, in this is, if we're doing these walking school buses, is there someone from the school department that actually? I was told someone actually accompanies the kids and,
Yeah.
Um, do they do things like once a week kinda walk the route where you're, if we have to make sure it's safe where the, how the children are walking, I know we're saving money on the bus, but can somebody use a broom so that, or pick up, so nobody's walking over needles and debris on the street? If that's what we're asking kids to walk over, um, you know, I just.
Yeah, I mean, they would, they would contact DPW or other city services to, to do that, they, they're not out there sweeping the streets. I do know that schools organize like, you know, community cleanups, uh, you know, we have great partners with One Holyoke and other, just other communities and I, I would encourage, you know, though, uh, you know, if, if there is an issue around the Lawrence area, which we, we do have somebody sweep, we actually hired a security guard. The main reason we hired a security guard at Lawrence wasn't for the security of, of the students or, you know, uh, anything involving the school, but the surrounding neighborhood, you know, uh, you, you do see like, you know, uh, drug paraphernalia, you see people sleeping, uh, by the library, so, you know, we hired them to patrol the, just patrol the school and that's part of their role is to take a look and see if they've, if they see anything like that, to get the right people to pick it up, but we have a, a very, not, there were no changes at Lawrence, first of all, like Lawrence, the, the majority of Lawrence students have always walked, it's a very, um, highly populated area and, uh, families live really close to the school. The, the policy is and always has been, uh, pre-K students are not eligible for transportation. Um, kindergarten through fifth grade, uh, if, if you live greater than a mile away, then you would get transportation and then sixth to eighth graders, if you, if you live greater than a mile and a half away, you would, you're eligible for transportation. And then once you hit high school, it's, uh, over two miles is where you would, you, where you would be eligible.
These are kids coming to Morgan though, right?
Yes.
So.
Oh, Morgan, I thought you said Lawrence, sorry.
This is Morgan.
Morgan.
Okay.
Coming from near High Street, right?
Right.
Yeah.
The problem is not around the school, it's the, the route.
The route, yeah.
You know, there is where I found the two needles and there's glass all over the place, there's debris and there's, I'm talking about the big, big candles that you use for, if somebody passes away, you know, the big candles. There's like fifteen of them and they, they've been there for, they've been there for months, like, you know? I can't stop and pick that up when I'm with the kids.
Right, you shouldn't have, yeah.
You know, what I'm saying, I'm trying to get the kids safely from point A to point B. But I'm just trying to fit, try to find out to see how long it, it takes to even pick that up. I picked up the needles, you know what I'm saying? I picked up the needles, you know, cause I got the, the red box and, and thing, you know, I did that, you know, but I can't, you know? It's like.
Yeah, I mean, no one from the school goes out, uh, unless there's an organized community event to like, let's clean up our streets, which I have seen. You know, I've seen that happen in the Lawrence area, I've seen it happen in the Morgan area, you know, they'll come on the weekend, but they don't, they clean around the school, they don't go and, and do the.
But should they, I, in terms of if.
I don't think so, I think they should call somebody like from DPW or somebody that is responsible for cleaning the streets.
Well, then, you know, okay, then maybe that's it, but if that doesn't happen, then I, I mean, are you calling the mayor's office? Is somebody that's in charge calling, because my concern is, it's like, we save money by not giving these kids a bus. So my point is, how much does it cost if we're having a, we're paying someone to walk with these kids? You know, we're just, we need to address the dangerous conditions that we're walking through with, with these kids. I mean, if you were to chaperon a trip to take some kids from the schools to go wherever, you would make sure that all the conditions of that trip were safe for the kids. So my point is, if we're doing walking school buses, it's more than just, you know, get them there, dump them off and do the rest of my day, it's gotta be, am I walking these children through a safe area?
Mm-hmm.
And does that mean a custodian or somebody from one of these two intersecting schools has to go over once a week, once every two weeks and pick up something that these kids are walking over? Or is it we get the DPW involved, maybe it's a combination of the three, but the point is, how are we making the children safe? That's, that's the bottom line for the adults, right? So that, that would be my concern as a, as a parent, it's like, okay, you saved on a bus and you said that I don't, I live too far away, or I'm not far enough apparently. Um, so, but my kid's gotta walk over needles and candles and glass to get to school? Are you doing your job, school department? To make sure that you're, you're the one that made the business decision to say, I don't live, I live too close.
Yeah.
So I can't, but yet you're making me walk through my kid through this, I'm just telling you,
But we didn't.
If I was a parent in that situation, that would be my perspective.
We didn't take away a bus from Morgan, like more kids probably, maybe, maybe those students that, that were, they, maybe they were going to Lawrence, they, they were going to another school, they were zoned for another school and now they go to Morgan.
That's the point, yeah.
But they're within the walk route, we didn't, it wasn't like the Kelly's, the Lyman situation where there was a hazard there and it's no longer there and that, that change was made. I'm, I'm not sure about these particular students, but I think one of the things we could do is, is take a look at all of our, um, all of our walking school bus routes and we can, we can work with community partners to organize a cleanup.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I, I've seen One Holyoke do it, I know there's plenty of, plenty of, um, of, uh, community organizations and, and volunteers that are willing to support an effort like that, for sure.
Mr. Chairman. Um, I had Rosalie first.
The tree, you're saying you're trying to walk.
Just speaking to the microphone, Rosalie, so people.
You're trying to walk down the sidewalk and the trees are hitting people in the face, now what? They need to call the DPW so they can trim that.
Um, the, um, DPW did the ones that I was, that I didn't order on, on East Street and Sergeant, but I'm talking about like from Main Street going up High Street. You know, that, that, it's on the left side, cause we walk them straight, like, we don't be on the opposite side, we stay on the same side where we just go up and down, you know? Unless we have to like maneuver around, so, um, basically that's where we, you know, the, um, today, one of the kids almost, you know, cause he got tangled up on the, in the tree branches on the ground, you know? And he almost fell, so I, we, I'm scared that they're gonna get hurt. I mean,
Call somebody.
I don't get paid to, to wa, you know, to go up there and, and bring the kids down. It's, I, I just, I volunteer, you know what I'm saying? Cause I love kids, it's something I'm always volunteering. So when, when I see things that are, that are concerned, when I, when I speak on something, it's not because I want it, you know, just picked up or whatever, no, there's a concern, it's a safety hazard, you know what I'm saying? And some of these parents don't even know that this is happening.
It's not my job, but I, I'll go and trim them if you want me to.
When you can't, we can't do it, you can't do it.
Against the law, okay.
Yeah, uh, by state statute, I believe that the schools are responsible from door to the school and from the school back to the door. I'm not positive about that, it used to be the route, the school department is responsible for that. Uh, secondly, Tapestry, I think are the people who should be picking up those needles wherever they are. I mean, they have, they have, I wouldn't pick them up, uh, Councilor Ocasio.
Well, I, I have the red box and I have the, the thing, so I picked it up because it, it needed to be done right away, like, I wasn't gonna just leave it there, you know, I, I see it, I'm gonna pick, I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna pick it up, because I have got the stuff in, in the trunk of my car, you know, so, um, but something gotta get because like, I heard that, um, what is it, the squad, what's the name of that? Right.
Flex Squad.
They, they, they do the clean, the, you know, the Saturdays or whatever, they're taking it clean, but that been there, like, I've been doing it with three, four months now, you know, and it's, candles are still there, you know, the, the debris's still there, the glass is still there, you know, so, cause I'm not gonna do it myself, you know, because something gotta get right away.
Councilor Rivera?
Thank you, um, so, uh, this, for me with this topic, there's, there's two things going on, right? One is the, the, the lack of transportation, and bless you, salut. The lack of transportation for kids in, uh, so, there's a difference when you're walking to Ian White, or if you're walking to McMahon School, even Sullivan School sometimes, right? Versus when you're walking to Lawrence, or if you're walking to Morgan, or if you're walking to Kelly. There are different things you see and you experience, um, I understand the walking school bus and, and I get, I get the piece on that. Um, but like, I think some of the stuff that is being brought up and, and I agree with you Carmen, like, it had, the, the route has to be safe. I think some of that falls on us as a city in collaboration with the city, I mean, with the school department to make sure that the routes are safe, right? Cause there's only so much they can do and there's some, some, like the branches, that's DPW. Nobody else can cut the branches, if they do, they can, they're liable to a fine from the city. So like stuff like that, we have to handle that. But I think that there's something to be said with, even with the two mile, one mile, whatever radius of bus, or even walking school, school bus, it could be two people, it could be police officers walking with them, it doesn't matter. The fact that these kids have to kinda walk by some of these things and experience certain things that normally they probably would not experience if they not walked to school. Um, I think that's the most impactful and most important piece out of all of this. The transportation is costly, I totally understand that, I think it's like ten million, if anything, for us to be able to try, provide transportation to everyone else. If they come to us with that bill, that means that the city council is probably gonna have to vote on increasing the school budget, um, for us to provide that transportation. I'm down with that, but, but are other councillors down with increasing the school budget to provide that transportation? Cause it's cool to talk about it and put it forward, but when it comes to that vote to increase the school budget, who's gonna vote yes and who's gonna vote no? That, that's, that's the piece right there, so that way we could all have the transportation that we need. Um, so I'm with it, like I'm with getting that transportation. So if, 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 if it's bringing us forward the plan of what it's gonna cost, then I think we've done that before, I think we've kind of gone through that. So i- if, if that's what it takes, maybe having that conversation so that they do have the co, the, the bus and you don't have to walk. Now, and, and I know you do it a voluntary stuff, like, cause you like to do it, but ultimately i- it's, it's not just you though, there's teachers that have to do it on a regular basis and for them, it's also cold and then they, they don't necess, it's in their scope of practice, but it's not necessarily in their scope of practice, like, they're, they signed up to be teachers, not to walk someone from one point to another, um, so, it's, it's a real conversation to be had, if, if we want new buses or more buses, then we gotta either do that. And if we're not gonna do more buses, then we have to provide a safe route as a city for the kids that are walking that route. Um, either or, um, and thank you for the time.
Well, maybe the state who, you know, runs our schools could use some of the forty million a month they're using to house people from other countries and hotels here. You know, they could, they could have ten million to pu, to afford, uh, for buses for our kids here, that people live in Holyoke. Uh, did anybody else wanna speak on this topic, Millie?
Yeah, so, as, um, Superintendent slash Receiver Soto mentioned, it's, it's in the policy. We have been very lenient before and really haven't kept to the policies. And just like what changed when we did the rezoning, now we're really sticking to policies. We're talking about wanting to get our, our schools back, we gotta start following rules, right? But if this is something that wants to be done, it can be brought to the, to the school committee to say to review, um, the policy on the mileage and if that's something that's gonna be adjusted and then gets approved, but then it also gets approved through the joint city council school committee, because again, when it comes to the funding, it's not something that you increase it and it goes towards net school spend, that's not part of net school spending, that's extra money that,
Yeah.
that the city council pays, because you can't, you can't give the extra money and put it towards the school and then say, you know, like you take it away from direct student service through net school spending, this is something extra that the city council pays directly for. Do you, do you understand what I mean?
Yeah, I understand.
So then you mentioned that it's already been what, three months that the candle is, so is it still like a memorial, or are you saying they're broken?
No.
Okay, so then, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kinda be like the bad guy here, right? So what, who have you contacted? Um, to make sure that that area, because if we're gonna start holding accountable our, our employees in the, in the school department to go clean up everything as they're walking, where would you like them to place it? Do they continue walking with it all back with the students if they get hurt now they're out on workman's comp? Because now off school property, um, on their way to go pick up students, now we're getting, they're getting hurt, cause they're carrying maybe ten pounds of trash back with them, where, where are we gonna put it in the first place? So I don't see how that is their job, the job is whomever is cleaning the city streets.
Yeah, okay.
Everybody has a job and a role. Um, in respects to, um, addressing the safety of it, the police department went and did the one for, um, Lyman Terrace and assessed the area and determined that it was no longer considered an unsafe area, that's why the buses were taken from Lyman Terrace. Now, what's gonna happen come Monday morning? If all the areas aren't cleaned, what do you think we're gonna see Monday?
Nightmare.
A nightmare of, of trash and everything thrown, and if DPW wasn't able to clean it all in the nick of time, are we saying that it's the responsibility of the school staff that's going to go pick up the students to bring them to school? To pick up all that trash? No, it's also the responsibility of ourselves as residents.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and holding people accountable of throwing their trash out, pick it up. Half the time I'd be walking around, I see people throwing stuff out the window
Yeah.
of their car.
Yeah.
You know, so are we saying it's the job of the school that they, how are they supposed to know that somebody drove by last night and started throwing trash out? Or that they were there, um, shooting up overnight? They're not gonna know and we shouldn't be holding our, our staff accountable to be making sure that needles are picked up. You know what, carry a cell phone, call Tapestry and they, they're the ones that are supposed to come out and pick it up. Number two, the issues regarding the trees, DPW, the issues of all the trash or, or whatever that in, impacts even the sidewalks, you mentioned the sidewalks aren't even. Those are things that then have to be addressed on the city aspect, it can't be held, it's like telling me to tell them, the staff to make sure that they bring cement with them so they can start fixing the sidewalk.
When I was a city council, I've been on these sidewalks, on these branches being cut and all this stuff for years already, okay, since Terry Murphy. And we, it's, I'm still in square one. Now I'm a city council, I do walk the streets and I see, and I do address it, you know? When they're gonna do it, I don't know. So, you know, so I guess I'm gonna have to just take a day and clean it all up then, because safety of the kids come first, you know what I'm saying?
You mentioned the Flex Squad, contact the Flex Squad, and One Holyoke has done a lot, I don't know if Neve Esperanza has also done their, their pickups.
The school has their partners and, and one thing that I'm taking away is I can ask every school that has a walking school bus to work with, you know, I can charge the principal to work to find a local organization or to schedule a, uh, uh, like a weekend cleanup and we can, we can certainly, I mean, it's springtime now, like now, now that it's nice out, that usually happens anyway. But what I'm saying, like, that's, that's a one-time thing, right? Like, let's just look at that, let's, and as part of that process, we can have, make phone calls and say, hey, these sidewalks, you know, they, we can ask to call the local, the, whoever the ward councillor is in, in that area, we can, we can make that a part of the process, but can they do that regularly, once a week, like, no? Um, I, I think a spring cleanup is totally doable in the school area and then we can say like, walk the, the walk route too. Um, I, I don't think that that's, that's too much to ask and I think that schools have done that in the past anyway, so we can just remind them, um, this week.
Thank you, Rosalie?
Um, I understand where Carmen is coming from, but we were raised, clean up around your own doors, but see, sometimes people do have jobs and they need to take care of their responsibility. Um, like even on my street, I clean my stuff, because I don't wanna look out my door and see all this mess in that park across from where I live, but we don't expect everybody to be the way we are, but I'm, if there are people that will do the job, call them and let them do their job. But I will clean up in a heartbeat, because I. But I will clean up in a heartbeat, because I, I think I came from my mom saying, where's the room? But that's life, but everyone's not doing that.
The other day when I left, I heard the city council meeting, a car passed by and threw two bottles in the middle of the street. Some guy was like, did they throw it at you? I said, no, they didn't throw it, I mean, they just tossed it out. I mean, I, they kind of flipped a little bit, I forgot that I was city council, I don't like stuff like that.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's like.
Right. Howie?
Yeah, just, just quickly, uh, maybe when we get to item number five, uh, maybe we could find some, some money in the leftover money from ARPA, ESER program or something like that to deal with this specific problem. This is one specific problem that councillor has, so, let's, let's concentrate on that one problem. See if we can get that fixed, and the rest of it, you know, is, is, is a whole different story.
Bottom line is, the children deserve to walk on clean streets and how we get it there, you know? I would count the school department pays for crossing guards, because why? You don't want children to get hit by cars, uh, five blocks from the school, or wherever. Fine, then we pay for it, uh, but whoever pays for it, we do these things because they need to be done, and we're just cognizant of it. I thank Carmen for bringing this to, uh, everyone's attention and raising awareness about it. So, uh, without further ado, uh, is there a motion that this has been complied with?
Motion that item?
Eight.
I second that.
Uh, motion's been made in saying that item eight has been complied with, uh, no other discussion, all in favor. That's all set, and they're now moving back to item five. Item five was an order that I had introduced back on February sixth. That was that the school department provide the city council with a report on their plan to use the remaining thirteen million dollars in ESER funds by September thirtieth. Also provide us a report on how the forty-four million has been spent thus far. So, um, Sean, Sean, welcome as our invited guest, and Sean, you're in the leadership at the finance, uh, area at the schools, and, uh, we welcome you to be with us, and, uh, yes, Howie?
Why don't we explain what ESER is and what ARPA is? Cause I'm sure that the people at home, a lot of them don't understand or know what that is.
Okay, great, so could you take a minute, Sean, to just kind of walk over what the,
Yeah, I can.
ESER is and the origin.
I can start, so ESER, um, ESER is the acronym for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. So these are federal dollars that, that came, uh, to the state, filtered through the state and to us, in, in three increments, ESER one, ESER two, and ESER three. Um, overall, we received, and if you look on page three, we res- and, uh, ESER one was about four point two million, ESER two was sixteen and a half, and then ESER three was thirty-seven point one. We had a period of three years where we could spend that money. Uh, prior to that happening, we were looking at a significant cut, um, in two thousand and nineteen. We were looking at potentially having to do some pretty, uh, significant cuts if this had not come to fruition. So, that, that initial funding that we got, uh, really helped stabilize us and, and, and get us to a place where, where that didn't have to happen.
So that was twenty nineteen was ESER one?
Uh, so, no, right after the pandemic.
Oh, so twenty twenty?
Yep.
Was ESER one, and ESER two and three came when?
Came right after that, like, maybe four months later.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Um, so the strategy with this, if you look at, uh, um, actually, I feel like I'm, I'm just taking over Sean's presentation. So, what, Sean, why don't you pick up on slide, uh, four with the goals?
I'd be happy to. But jump in, you know, Anthony, you oversaw a lot of this, right? So I'm kind of, kind of coming at the tail end, um, but, so, happy to provide this report to you all on ESER, we know it's a lot of money. Um, it's done a lot of positive things for the Holyoke Public Schools and other school systems. Um, so diving into this and going through all the expenses of these three grants that we've received, um, the, the sort of four overarching goals that I can see from what we've spent the money on, is to ensure the health and wellness of students, address some of our facility needs, specifically around HVAC, uh, provide enhancements to the instructional program, specifically to help offset any learning loss related to COVID. Um, and then also the big thing that we'll talk about in a second is early implementation of some of the additional funding we were gonna get from the Student Opportunity Act, implementing some of those initiatives early, um, so we weren't waiting for all of that funding to come in. So the next slide is the chart, colorful chart, that's in your packet. So, what this chart just shows you is, um, the net school spending requirements for Holyoke for many years were basically flat. Um, and that's because the foundation budget assumptions and the enrollment, all of that, um, produced very little new, um, new money for the city of Holyoke. Uh, the Student Opportunity Act, well, first the Foundation Budget Review Committee came out, they had some recommendations, some of those were implemented, I think beginning in FY twenty. And then ultimately, the Student Opportunity Act was voted, um, which significantly increased the foundation budget. And so you can see from FY twenty to FY twenty-four, or sorry, to FY twenty-seven, which would be the final year of implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. Um, we're seeing about an average of a five point one percent increase in the funding, both locally and, um, most, you know, mostly through chapter seventy, but also the local contributions going up as well. Um, so, the reason we put this chart in here is ESER has helped us implement some of those initiatives early, um, with the anticipation of these increases coming in, in the future.
So, that was really a strategy, like, hey, we know this extra general fund money is coming. We know it's gonna be implemented over a six-year period. Why wait till six year, uh, six years from now to add additional councillors? To add, uh, coaches for our teachers, to add academic intervention teachers, to add some more nursing supports and some more nurses? Like, why would we wait for that money to come in when we have this? Let's think about, if we were in year six, what would we want? And let's use that money to do that and accelerate the Student Opportunity Act. So, uh, that was really the strategy going into this. In addition to all the health-related things that we had to do, so, you know, there was like, uh, learning, uh, centers that we, we opened, when, when kids were remote, so instead of doing learning at home by themselves, they could go to an actual space, where there were people there, um, obviously with the right spacing. Um, but, you know, the strategy mainly in terms of adding positions was like, what would we wanna add with Student, Student Opportunity Act? And how could we do it now?
And while we are not completely immune to this, you're gonna see lots of newspaper articles about school districts dealing with the loss of ESER, um, and the budget gaps that they're facing in Amherst, uh, North Hampton, I think I just saw Belcher Town. Um, and, and again, while we're not completely immune from that, we're in a situation where we are seeing those increases in chapter seventy to help offset some of that impact and to phase, kind of glide through that. Um, it's gonna, this year in particular is gonna be a bumpy year, because it's, the year goes away completely. But there's many school districts that are not seeing any increase in, in their chapter seventy funding, so, or very little. So the next slide is.
I have a question.
Oh, Howie.
Well, are you prepared for any ramifications of, uh, the loss of any personnel because of this? Uh, because of the funds drying up? Because,
Yeah.
I thought there was a governor too on, 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 a governor, a, a ceiling on what you could use for personnel? Or was there, or was it completely open?
There wasn't necessarily a ceiling, um, it just had to align to those, those goals at the beginning that, that we said. Um, we didn't, that, that, that would have been foolish of us to go out and just, like, hire a bunch of people that we wouldn't be able to support with Student Opportunity Act funding. So we were really intentional. There were some positions that we added that we said, hey, these are only three-year positions. So like, keep in mind that in three years when ESER goes away, there may be enough Student Opportunity Act money, but there, but we're not guaranteeing that, and like, you know, we have a very decentralized budget process, where principals build and develop their budgets based on, uh, funding that we give them and allocations that they give them. So, this year, they're gonna have to, you know, uh, we've been, we've had the opportunity to not have to cut over the last three years, but this, this year is kind of like a right sizing year, but thankfully, we have a lot of vacancies, right? Not thankfully, cause I wish we were able to fill all of those. Uh, but we've had a bunch of vacancies all year because of the staffing market, the way it is. And, you know, part of our strategy was, uh, part of the strategy is to do more inclusive practices. And a strategy that we used was, let's hire more ELL and more special education teachers, and let's try to get to a point where we're co-teaching, uh, where they're a part of the, the, the gen ed classroom, supporting the students in the classroom. Um, it was a very aggressive approach, and had we not been in this staffing shortage, uh, I think it would have been really good. But the reality is, is like, we don't, we, we can't fill all those positions. People, uh, you know, the, everybody, every school district in the Commonwealth, and maybe even in the country, is dealing with staffing shortages and teacher shortages. So, we, we were a little aggressive in saying, ooh, we're, we're gonna add this many teachers, but it, it just didn't come to fruition, we couldn't hire them.
Counsel Rivera, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, um, I think the only one thing I kind of wanted to like, point out is when I'm looking at, uh, all of these, the one, two, and three, right? Um, one of the things that sticks out to me with regards to the spending is, and I kind of pay attention to it, is the special education piece, right? Because for us, our largest demographic is special education more than likely.
Not largest, but it's thirty, close, close to thirty.
But we have one of the largest in the state, right?
Yeah.
So,
Sure.
For me, I guess what I see is, is like, I think in ESER one, it said, or ESER three here, it says one point six mil. And then there's another one that says two point two mil, or two point oh. And then there's another one that's like nine hundred and fifty-three thousand. So, I think for me is like, is, that, I mean, I, I don't manage it, you guys manage it. It's just like, I know, I, I feel like the need is way greater than what was spent with regards to just special education. And I understand that, like, it's difficult to kind of fill in the gap for special education. But like, if we're one of the highest in the states, I feel like a lot of, a lot of our focus and energy should be trying. And, and again, I'm not in the road, that's you guys, whatever, but like, special education should be taking more money, in a sense, because.
I mean, it, it is, Izzy, when you think about the amount of money that the school department has, and the amount of funding, the resources, if you do it on a per-student basis, it, one million percent, like, a lot of, a lot of our funding is, is going towards our, our special education, uh, students, because they need more support. We, we spend, you know, I wanna say, eight, eight million dollars just on out-of-district tuition alone.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Eight million dollars on, and tha- and that's probably for a hundred and twenty kids, you know?
So, but that was, but that's not, that's not counting the ESER money.
That's not counting the ESER money, so, you know, the, in this, you know, we did use a lot of this. So, I, I think there's one line item there for alternative special education, lighthouse and sped services. Um, what, one of the things that is happening, I just talked about how many vacancies we have, right? So, what we end up doing is if we can't fill like a behavior intervention para or something like that, that normally would cost, you know, let's, let's say thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, if we were to ha- able to hire thirty-five, forty thousand dollars. We can't find them, nobody's applying to them, like, but there's these companies that are out here that, that they'll, they'll provide them for us, but it comes at a, a much higher cost. So instead of spending forty thousand dollars on an employee, we gotta contract it out to somebody else for eighty thousand dollars.
And the, and the, the reason why I bring it up for me is, cause, I mean, for, it's, it speaks a little closer to home for me. So like, uh, uh, for like, speech therapy, I have to technically drive my daughter to, to, to North Hampton to take her speech therapy. Not to say that they don't do it in the schools, cause they do it, but it's not the same. It's not one-on-one intense speech therapy, which is what my daughter needs. It's more of a group setting with all the kids in the class, and that doesn't necessarily bring her to the level that she needs to be at. So, for me, it's like, this is pre-K, so, if she's in second grade, how's it gonna look? How's it gonna look in sixth grade? How's it gonna look in eighth grade? So, if, and, and I haven't even talked about OT, i- like, OT's a whole nother piece of, of, of therapy that she needs. But, in the school system, it's, it's not that they're not saying that she doesn't need it, I know that there's a cost to it. And because there's a cost to it, there's a lot of questions, and there's a lot of, how do you say, filtering out to make sure that the services really need to be had, because the cost is significant, and I, and I agree with it. I just think that, for us as a district, we are one of the largest i- in the state, probably in the country, we're up there, with demographic of, of, of people with special education, and that is kind of what is one of the biggest struggles for us in, in, in general, right? If, if, if you, I, I remember and I recall back to when I was a kid, it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily the same. It could have been the same, but things weren't diagnosed as it was today, right? So it's like, I would have maybe two to three kids that would, in my classroom, that would do things that would be like, wow, you're wild, right? Now you're in, you're, you're in a classroom where you have maybe seven to ten kids that are doing that same exact behavior, that only two or three kids were doing then. Not, now, so, I think about it, like, imagine seven to ten, how's a teacher able to manage that classroom? Like, who's learning and who's not learning, right? And how, how are we working with that piece with regards to managing the special education piece? And providing the, providing the services to not only the kids, but to the families. I'm, I'm fortunate enough to, to be a city councillor, uh, and, and for my wife to be an adjustment councillor. I, I, like, we can speak up, we know certain things and we can advocate for ourselves. But there are a lot of other parents out here that when they see the paperwork and they meet in that room, in the IEP room, they just sit there and shut down and just listen to what the teacher or whoever is there says. And not always, and not to say that they're doing it maliciously, it's just that not always the recommendation is in the best interest of the child. Um, and again, it's not a malicious thing, it's just that people perceive things differently. And sometimes you can go out, like, out of district, and they'll give you a different recommendation, because there's money involved. Um, and I just wanna kind of like to highlight that piece, cause I feel like for me, what's hurting us the most is the special education piece. Once we can figure that out, as a district, we'd be able to move over and move the pendulum dramatically in different directions. And thank you again for the time.
Follow up real quick?
Sean, yep.
Um, one thing just to point out on those charts, so the, uh, the staffing and fringe includes all staff. So like, the councillors that the superintendent mentioned, they're all lumped into that staffing number mostly because of space. Um, so the special education row you're seeing, that's just if, for accounts payable, when we make a payment to a vendor of some sort. But there's a lot of staffing rolled up in that staffing fringe that are for nursing, for counselling, um, and other support services that would benefit special education students.
Sean, could you focus now at, uh, on the thirteen million that remains? And where you see this going over the next, uh, between now and the thirtieth, which was kind of at the heart of the order?
Yeah, so that's, um, that is on slide, I don't know what number it is, it says projected spending at the top. So, this is, uh, everything that's on this slide is either obligated in a purchase order, or it's on a list of commitments that are actively being worked on. Um, the biggest one is, uh, you'll see in the middle, are a number of facility improvement projects that are slated for the summer. Um, the window, door, and boiler project that the council approved, um, for Donahue, Lawrence, uh, Dean, and McMahon. Um, there's also a Lawrence Playground in there, that is a combination of ARPA funds and ESER funds to replace that playground. Um, and then there are a number of standalone HVAC projects that are outside of the MSBA process, but rooftop unit replacement projects that we're working on. So, that's the biggest chunk of the, what's on the plan for that remaining thirteen million. There's still staff being paid, which you can see at the top, uh, our estimate of what they will cost through the end of the, this fiscal year. Um, and there's a number of other, again, purchase orders initiatives. But, what this results in is about two point three, two point four million of that thirteen they, uh, mentioned, that is not specifically programmed yet. Now, we have started a process, uh, with our directors and our principals to identify, um, what are the remaining needs? What are things we would do this summer, uh, to spend that down? Um, and we do have a, a robust list of initiatives that we would consider.
More than, that total more than that.
Yeah, the total more than that. Um, I think it's, you know, worth looking at boiler replacement at the high school, those boilers are, I think, twenty years old, that, that's one we're looking at. Um, chrome brick replacements, getting.
Yeah, there's four boilers at the high school right now, and three of them just like, are done. So right now, the high school is being powered by one boiler. I think two of them are normally functioning, and the other two are for redundancy, but like, it, you know, we're, we're not gonna wait, and for a MSBA project, we got this money.
Do it.
We're just gonna do it now, and we won't have to worry about it for another fifteen years, you know?
And two million would do the job?
Uh, two million, so two million is what's left over. We're, we got five point seven million dollars worth of facilities upgrades that we wanna do this summer.
At the high school, or?
No, not, uh, the high school, the boiler.
How much would that? How much would that project be approximately?
I'm thinking so.
We've got a quote on it.
We got a quote on it?
The high school, but it's actually not that bad. It's two hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, that's not bad. That's a no-brainer then.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's get that done.
Yep.
Cause we have the beautiful high school, we don't wanna have no, uh, no heat.
Yeah, that would be, uh, I was, listen, I was like, please, don't, don't let it be.
Yeah, both high schools will have brand new boilers, Dean slated to get a new boiler as well, but through the MSBA project.
It was, it was pretty mild, but you know, an- another thing is, is we're in the process of trying to balance a four million dollar deficit. In our, in our operating budget for next year. So, um, you know, there's, there's things. Like to Sean's point, like, we're gonna go through this budget development process, we're not gonna have an issue identifying things that make sense. Like, let's do this now, um, and then, so, uh, you know, we'll get another wave of SOA, uh, next year. Um, the, and we, we gotta look at what, what's currently obligated too. We were looking at a list the other day of things that, that we, you, you know, we gave to schools that were supposed to do and didn't do. So like, we gotta sweep a lot of that, but that's, that's the great work that Sean and his team are doing.
Okay, Rosalie?
The two hundred thousand dollars would pay for how many boilers?
It would replace all four of them.
It would?
Yeah.
Oh, beautiful.
Yeah.
So, uh, consider that fully endorsed, uh, with, to, to get that done. Um, okay, so, thank you for the presentation. I would recommend that you guys do a follow-up at the next time we get together as a joint committee as to. You know, we have to decide as a group and we're gonna have that discussion in a couple of minutes about how often we should meet. Okay, is this gonna be every two months, every three months? I'm interested to hear what the group thinks.
Just one quick question.
Yeah, Howie?
One quick question on those boilers, do you have to put those out to bid or can you just go ahead and hire someone?
Oh, we have to bid them for sure, and we need an O P M too, so.
How long would that take?
Uh, Sean, do, do you have a time?
Actually, for the high school boilers?
Yeah.
So we're actually using a, a state contract, which, which does require getting multiple quotes.
Um, that sounds like a critical issue, I mean.
It is.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for.
It can't go on for another winter, like, it has to get replaced.
Thank you very much for the follow-up. We really appreciate it and, uh, we'll, I recommend, um, we could probably. Should we table this, colleagues, uh, and then have it do a follow-up maybe later in the year as this is progressing? To see how it goes for an update or, uh, should we consider it complied with? Millie? Yeah, go ahead, Millie.
Oh, I was, I was gonna say, like, comply with it now, but as we did at the beginning about school rezoning update. It could just be an update as to what are the remaining funds and where we're at with it.
If we call it complied with, though, it's gonna get reported out and we'd have to file another order. If we table it, it'll be in the committee and then we can get an update. That's why I'm kinda leaning towards we should table it and get an update in a couple of months. Okay, all right. Motion's been made and seconded to table item five. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. All right.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it very much. Um, we have two items left and, um. This one, we'll see how far we get with it. Item number six is an order introduced by myself, which is the Joint Committee on City Council and School Committee Review. And respond to the receivership response from Commissioner Riley. The Hoyokai and District twenty-three and, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four District Report Card. That was released by Mass Dessie, documents attached. So this order was looking for basically our. Thoughts about the district report cards, in particular, I pointed out, cause I happen to be a parent of a child at Hoyokai. So I got the one for Hoyokai School and I wanted to see kinda. What's our thought on these district report cards? Um, they weren't too flattering. On the other hand, what do we do to get towards average? You know, just either as a district or otherwise and. How are we kinda comparing to other cities that are like Holyoke, as, especially as a high school? Um, happy to have other, but I wanted to focus on the high school in this particular order. Uh, Anthony and I had to have an opportunity to have a discussion in advance of the meeting. Thinking about doing something more in-depth of a presentation for us, just kinda wanted to get our feet with. With it a little bit tonight, but for a subsequent meeting, we could get into kinda some of the details and. What are the thoughts of Lori, who's a tremendous principal at the high school and others about. You know, where we're at, where we should be, what's, what's reasonable, you know, cause it's really hard to compare. Us to a statewide average where that may not be realistic, but are we doing better than? Central High School in Springfield? Are we doing better than a high sc-? You know, a, a good high school in Worcester or Boston or Fall River or, you know, these other communities. Framingham that are comparable to us and kinda use some benchmarks. Are we on target or, you know, how are we gonna get better on some of these metrics? So Anthony, um, you wanna take it from there, please?
Yeah, so, um, the, the state actually sets targets for us every year. Uh, the first, the, but during the pandemic, uh, that, the, the target-setting process didn't happen. Because they weren't implementing the full accountability system. So the year that you mentioned was the first time since the pandemic that the state implemented the full accountability system. Um, which isn't just MCAS scores, like I know we've talked about a lot about MCAS. They look at your graduation rate, they look at your dropout rate, they look at students in advanced, uh, uh, doing advanced coursework. Uh, they look at, um, chronic absenteeism, so there's, there's a lot of metrics that they look at. And they give you targets for each of those, based on each school, not just as a whole district, that each school gets their own, uh, target. Um, one of the things that the state communicated about these results that, that I wholeheartedly agree with is that. We gotta, we gotta take a look at where we were in two thousand and nineteen, when these results come out. And how are we measuring towards at least getting back to those levels and then getting beyond? And I'm not gonna sit here and say that the two thousand and nineteen levels were, were great, right? Like, but, but that is the, the, the state, the entire state took a dip after the pandemic. And what they, what they saw as they started getting accountability results was that, um, was that they were, there was a continual slide. From, uh, twenty-one to twenty-two to, a- and then in twenty-three, what they saw is that it flattened out. And, and that's consistent with Holyoke, um, with, from twenty-two to twenty-three, you saw like. Kinda flat results as it relates to MCAS results. But we did meet our targets with chronic absenteeism, we met our targets with, um. You know, students involved in, in advanced coursework and, you know, at, at the high school. They actually did for their ELA scores, they did get back to pre-pandemic levels, which, which is a good thing, like not. That the state didn't get back to pre-pandemic levels yet, the state average. Uh, but in math, drastically, you know, dipped since the pandemic. So when we compare how we did in math and science, science isn't as bad, but as, as math is, but math is clearly a problem. So I had a good, uh, good opportunity to talk to Lori today. Um, you know, and, and, you know, bottom line is, we need to do a better job getting kids prepared for high school before they even get there. You know, a lot of our kids are getting to ninth grade and, and they're not at grade level. And when it matters, you know, at the high school, it actually matters for graduation, it actually matters for credits. Um, what courses you're taking, uh, so, which is all, all to say that, you know, part of the reason we did rezoning is because. We didn't think the K to eight model was getting middle school students ready for, for high school. We're hoping that now that we have middle schools, um, this is the first year. So like, I, I, I wanna, I wanna acknowledge that this has been a really rough year and we have to get better. At how we're, we're delivering on, on the middle school experience for our kids. Um, but that, that was a long-term plan and, um, you know, I, I wanna say, I, I just wanna name. I have in front of me some, some important notes here on all the indicators. So they look at achievement in ELA, achievement in math, achievement in English language proficiency. And then all the other things that I mentioned. So, uh, one thing that I didn't mention was, was, um, extended engagement rate. So that's the rate, the, the extent that a student is, is actually held back and they, they go to high school for a fifth year. That's another metric that the state looks at. Um, my big takeaways, uh, counselor is. The, the areas that we saw that were strong were our chronic absenteeism. I, I'm not gonna celebrate it because it's still well below where we were prior to the pandemic. But we did see, we did exceed our target in that area. We exceeded our target in extended engagement, we exceeded our ta- our target in our dropout rate. We exceeded our target in advanced coursework and we exceeded our target in, um. The way that the accountability system works is they, they measure all these metrics for all your students. And then they measure those same metrics for your lowest performing, twenty-five percent performing students. And so those kids actually get measured twice. Uh, our growth for our lowest performing student group was an area of strength that the state recognized. The areas of growth are what we talked about earlier, MCAS scores. MCAS scores are not, you know, where we'd like to see them. They haven't hit pre-pandemic levels yet, with the exception of ELA at the high school in tenth grade. Um, and the other area of growth and area of concern, uh, particularly at the high school is. Uh, students that are English language learners and their attainment of, of acquiring the English language. That was something that, that we didn't see much growth with our, with our English language learners. Um, and it's an area of focus for, for the high school for sure. So we wanna make sure we're closing those gaps, not just overall for our students, but for our students with disabilities and our students who are English language learners.
Just one moment. Um, yeah, some of the ones that did pop off, you know, the eyeball. That I would like to dive, uh, deeper into at a future meeting is. Access to the arts was about half of the statewide average. That's concerning, you know, we wanna make sure that we're providing a holistic education. The, um, the absenteeism stuff is just mind-boggling. We're triple the state, um, numbers in terms of days absent, days chronically absent. Um, it, that's concerning, obviously, we're not gonna do well if you're not actually there. Um, and, and when you see some of these numbers where it's like, the majority of the students at the high school. Are chronically absent, a majority. I mean, these are, these numbers are north of fifty percent.
Yeah, fif- yeah.
So that's like, whoa, okay. Um, so that, that, that is concerning, like, what, you know, I'll be interested to hear at a future meeting. Like, what's, what's the game plan on that? Um, all this other stuff kinda to me, when you see like half the students are chronically absent. Um. What else is there to say after that? That means half are like checked out. And at that point, no wonder the scores are what they are, right? Cause if you're chronically absent, um, a half the school, then.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't, you're not ready to learn.
So chronic, chronically absent means that a student has ten, you know, is ten percent of the school year, so we have a hundred and eighty days. So that would mean that a student missed eighteen days or more, which is a lot. You're right, absolutely. Um.
So how, you know, how do you, and of course, there's no cap on that, they could be more than eighteen.
Yeah.
That's just the minimum.
Some of the things we did, we added family engagement coordinators at every single one of our schools. They each have a caseload of about fifteen students that are chronically absent. We're taking this really seriously. We're trying, I think the, the, the goal here is to, to have a sense of belonging, like. If kids feel like they belong in the school, if they're happy, they're gonna come to school, you know? If they have good, positive relationships with their te- with their teachers and, and they just feel good about school, they're gonna come. So there's been a lot of stuff like that, that principals have been trying to, uh, you know, we, we started doing attendance celebrations that, that we weren't doing before. Just to recognize students for, for not just showing up every day, but for making progress. Um, and that, that's one of my favorite nights of, 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 of the year, honestly, is when you get to see all the smiles on kids' faces. When they're, you know, they're celebrated and they're getting an award in front of their families. I think the arts is one that's super misleading. It doesn't mean that we don't have arts. I think tho- those are choices that kids are making, right? We have, uh, we have three academies at the high school and one of them is performing and media arts. And if a student is choosing that academy, I guarantee you, they're taking a lot of art programs. But the other two, the kids might not be interested in it, so they're not choosing to take those courses. The access is there, like, they can take them if they want them, but they've chosen a different path.
Should, not, not just on that point, should we consider from a curriculum perspective? You know, one of the things that college tries to encourage, at least many colleges, is a liberal arts education. Is that you take a holistic, you know, you need to have so much history, so much science, so much. Of these different core areas so that you're a well-rounded person. Should we consider that when you see something like our students? Half of the students less take the arts than the statewide average. Is that something where we're looking at that result and if students aren't affirmatively choosing it, either it's one, not a priority. Or, but I think they're depriving themselves of something by not being a participating in the arts. Um, should we make that as like a general education requirement that kinda requires so many credits in these areas?
I mean, I wouldn't.
So that you're coming out well-rounded. I mean, I've, you know, it's like some schools have a foreign language requirement, some s- s- some students. Uh, you know, gym, uh, you know, you have all these different areas that make you a well-rounded person.
Yeah.
And gives you a more global approach to the world that we live in. And when you see things where you have to take a sculpture class or a drawing class or. You know, um, different performing arts or things like this, that this makes you a more rounded person. And where we're so off from what's going on in the rest of the state and what other children are exposed to. It, to me, it's just something where we, I think we need to think about. If they're not, if the water isn't gravitating to the low resistance, uh. Should we be opening a channel, if you will, to, to, to consider this? But, uh, again, I am not a professional educator, but.
Yeah.
Apparently, people that know a great deal about these things say, you know, these sort of liberal arts type of curriculums are. Helpful to ro- to having well-rounded people.
And the other thing I wanna point out is when you look at that data, that also includes Dean and that also includes Opportunity Academy. So at Dean, for example, you know, they only have half the time in their academic classes and the other half of the time they're spending. You know, learning a trade. So, you know, the, those kids chose, they, you know, they don't. If they wanted to be in performing and media arts, they would've went to Hoyokai, right? Uh, they.
It doesn't have to be a lot. I think what this is suggesting is, it's to the point of none. And, and that, I guess, is the thing that just kinda where the question presents where it's like, you, you really don't have much, if any, exposure. Um, it says the percentage of students who participate in an arts course. Um, this includes visual art, music, theater, dance, general arts. Um, you know, somehow eighty percent of the Massachusetts children are, but ours are under forty percent. So it's, mm, you know, I don't know, it's just, it's just one of those things to think about. I won't harp on it, but, uh, I, I, I just draw it out as something to consider. Were there others that wanted, uh, Howie?
Just quickly, uh, mathematically speaking, you talk about absenteeism. If a child is absent eighteen days in the course of a year, starting from kindergarten and grade one. By the time he's a sophomore in high school, or she's a sophomore in high school, they've missed one full year of school. So obviously, the gap, and the gap always has been at eighth grade jump to the high school. Or, well, some of us who were always a proponent of the junior high school system, you didn't have that. You had the seventh, eighth and ninth, and basically you could take your ninth grade at the high school or you could take it at one of the junior high schools. And I think some of the European models are going back to that system now. I believe some of the Nordic countries are, are, are doing it. But that would, that would, would take that gap and it would move that gap closer. But we are, we are into a middle school system. Uh, the data suggests that the biggest jump is from the eighth grade to the, to the high school.
Absolutely.
That's where the student loses or is not prepared to make that jump.
Yeah.
That's, that's where the improvement needs to be made.
I agree, um, the, you know, chronic absenteeism, it, it, the state is actually really focused. Mildred talked about, the state was actually trying to add more weight to it in the accountability system. Um, you know, thinking that like, if, if we add more weight to it, people will take it more seriously. We're taking it very seriously. But since the pandemic, um, I think. since the pandemic, um, I think families have been used to uh, I'm theorizing now, right? Like, families have been used to keeping, like, we were telling families, keep your kid home if they s- they're sick, right? Um, because of the pandemic. Those were the guidelines that were given to us, and we just haven't bounced back from that. I think a lot of families are choosing to keep their kids home sick when when they're, you know, when they're not too sick to go to school. And and a lot of families, you know, you know, there's some families that are working from home, like, there there's just the getting kids to school, uh, since the pandemic has been, before the pandemic, we were in the the thirty percent range. We were around thirty-seven percent, thirty-six percent. Now we're all the way up to forty-eight, which is better than it was the the year before last year, but it's still not where it needs to be.
Well, we were all led astray with that pandemic. The pand- that that unfortunately uh, the lockdowns and keeping kids out of school.
Yeah.
Kids who are the least vulnerable to that, to that illness, uh, were the ones who were punished the most. And it's, it's unfortunate that, but that, that's what happened. And now it's on the, on the onus of us to see if we can close that gap, to get our kids back to where they should be. But uh, once again, the jump from eighth grade to ninth grade, that's the biggest problem in in most school systems, not only in Holy Oak.
As a volunteer, I don't have the sheepskin to prove it. I could teach him to sing. I can teach him to have fun with music, arts and crafts. I can teach him to cook. So whatever I can do as a volunteer, um, I'll jump in the boat.
Um, we got a lot of civic engagement coming out of Ward Two here tonight. I heard, and God bless you guys, walking kids and cutting trees and jumping in the boat. I'm in, I'm impressed, uh. Um, so anyways, uh, I think my recommendation is that we table, uh, no, no. Yes, table, because you're gonna come back maybe with some more, or do you think we're good?
One information, I think I gave, so one of the things that I would inc- on October thirteenth, we presented the accountability
Okay.
process and a bunch of data to the school committee. Um, like
So you feel comfortable where where we're at with this, and we can always file subsequent orders?
You can always file a subsequent order.
I just want to make sure it's consistent with the conversation you and I had earlier. Okay, so uh, motion, this has been complied with, item six? Okay, all in favor? Oh, so moved. And that leaves us, uh, colleagues with item nine left. And that's our last item for the night, and that's an update regarding the purchase at two twenty-five High Street. Uh, motion to take that off the table? So moved, all in favor? Um, all right, so as we know, um, we have an item in finance currently to consider that. Um, as well, we have some um, transfer requests, uh, to do that. There's a proposal relative to a uh eminent domain taking at two twenty-five, uh, High Street. And we welcome the treasurer here, Rory. Thank you for coming.
I think we got Margaret online and Josh online.
Oh, and Margaret's online and the mayor is online, and hopefully he, the mayor has had a chance to do all his fatherly duties, uh, that that, and we appreciate him zooming back in. Um, we'll go high level, uh, if, is this the same presentation that was made to finance?
Yeah, so um, as I'm pulling up the presentation, um, uh, what I can say is that the request that came to us was to give uh the same presentation that was made to finance. Understanding that at finance, um, there were some additional questions asked, and we've been invited back on the twenty-sixth. That meeting's already been scheduled, um, for finance on March twenty-sixth, and I believe it's the only agenda item that's coming up. So, um, we can go through this very quickly.
If we could do the high level and what
Absolutely.
Why I would say that is, colleagues, um, I would encourage you, if you want, it's on film. We went quite extensively into this whole thing, um, at the last finance meeting. We, I would also encourage you to come on March twenty-sixth for what will be round two of this exact meeting. I didn't realize, uh, this. So, um, yes, if we could have the Reader's Digest.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause we've had, we're gonna have two meetings on it.
So. Okay, I'm just gonna share the presentation. Uh, at the last meeting, the mayor, uh, really gave the presentation. I just, uh, kinda did the slideshow, but since the mayor's remote, um, we're here with Anthony, and I think we can breeze through this pretty quickly. Um, and obviously, uh, Margaret Wood, um, who's on the uh screen. Um, I might not be able to see it, cause I'm about to share the presentation. Um, is, uh, with Answer. Um, you are probably familiar with Answer. They are the OPM for the Peck Middle School Project. Uh, they are also, uh, been procured by the city, uh, and the school department, uh, as a house doctor to work as an OPM on the general ARPA, um, municipal buildings renovations project. So this is um, an addendum to those uh procurements that they're here with us, um, working with us. Um, let's get this tab. Here we go. And so, uh, as been previously mentioned, um, here we go. So a number of years ago, uh, the city was, uh, asked to review, um, some different properties. It was already brought up. I was down in my office doing work, so I've been following along with the meeting. Um, so I know that, uh, some of this conversation's already taken place. Um, a review, a thorough review was done of fifty-seven Suffolk Street, along with a number of other properties in the city. Um, at that time, um, no movement, uh, had happened. Um, and that brought us fast forward to now. Uh, Mayor Garcia, um, had reached out, uh, as part of this larger refresh of municipal buildings uh, to say what's going on with Central Office. We're paying for these leases. In addition to that, we're paying for a lease for a transitions program, which is an actual, um, uh, program of the school system um, that's currently, uh, housed at, uh, location at Open Square. So, um, we did an analysis, uh, and at the same time, a property right adjacent, uh, kitty cornered at City Hall, uh, two twenty-five High, uh, became available. Um, we had some negotiations, we had an appraisal done. Um, those documentations had been previously submitted. I didn't bring the appraisal here with me, but we can certainly make sure that uh, everybody on the council already has access to it. We'll make sure the school committee does as well. Um, so, um, what we'll do is, uh, just breeze right through. Uh, and as we're going through this, what I'm gonna say is that the, um, what came out of finance, uh, was there were a few things that they wanted us to report back on. Um, we're gonna talk about some of these other properties that were reviewed as part of this process. We were asked to come back to finance with an apples-to-apples comparison of what would it look like, uh, to purchase, uh, take by eminent domain, cause that's what we're talking about here, is a friendly taking. Um, take by eminent domain, either fifty-seven Suffolk Street or two seventeen, two twenty-five High. Um, we're, we're gonna be prepared to do that. There's some additional requests because long story short, fifty-seven Suffolk Street is a much, much larger building than two seventeen, two twenty-five High. Um, and, uh, there are many differences, uh, between the two. So we're gonna, we're gonna be doing that. But this is a a brief overview of two seventeen, two twenty-five High. Margaret, I don't know if you can chime in, and then I can just kinda go through, because most of this presentation, when we talk about uh, specific to two twenty-five High, is how the school department would fit, uh, within that existing structure.
Yeah, I can say a few words about it. I mean, in a nutshell, as some of you probably know right now, um, the school department is occupying two floors of fifty-seventh Suffolk. It's a, it's a much bigger footprint. It's probably double the footprint of this, the taller part of this building. Um, so there's other space in fifty-seventh Suffolk. Um, what I did, um, you know, my first step when I started looking at this for the city, for the u- possible use of the school department, was I did what is sort of the common terminology is a test fit. Taking, um, the program of the existing, um, school department and looking to see how it would fit into this building. So, um, there's several slides here that we can walk through. I'm not sure that we need to, but I think in a nutshell, the way I would think about this is um, the two properties offer kind of very different perspectives in terms of what they might, the ways in which they might benefit, um, the city. Um, this property, the two twenty-five High Street, is a very good fit for the school department in transition. So transitions would be in this lower two-story piece, and the school department would be in the taller space. Um, on the sort of multiple floors, so there's six stories to the building, and it's, it's a pretty good fit. There's a little bit of extra space, but it's not like you could decant other things, you know, multiple other departments of the city into this. It's, it's a, a comfortable, snug fit. I think by comparison, fifty-seven Suffolk, which came up in great detail um, in the finance committee meeting, is a much larger floor plate, and so the cit- the the district would only ever occupy part of that building. So the comparison we were asked to make was to look at a couple of important issues. So one is what's, what would be the difference in operating costs in the two buildings? Which is to say utilities and other costs that we would be associated with it. And then, um, also to look at more deeply than we had before the finance subcommittee meeting F, um, the feasibility, what what you would do with the other space in fifty-seventh Suffolk, and how transitions, which is, as Rory said, is in separate rental space, would, could be decanted into fifty-seventh Suffolk. And and what it were with the pros and cons of those two, as you look at them. So, uh, Rory, I'm not sure we, I mean, you can flip through the slides, but yeah, this slide is, talks about what transitions is, and maybe, um, Anthony would like to just chime in a little bit about this program for folks that aren't familiar with it?
Yeah, so transitions program is for, um, s- students that that had graduated high school, but are trans- are transitioning um, into life. I think they age out at about twenty-two years old, but, um, we have about thirty-six students. Uh, we try to work with local businesses to provide them with opportunities to, uh, learn how to get a job, teach them how to wash clothes, teach them how to cook, things like that. Uh, they do some work at Metcalf with with our, uh, facilities crew over there, so um, it's a great program, very popular program. If we didn't offer this program, those thirty-six kids would probably be going to Westfield or Springfield that has a similar program. So, uh, right now, we lease space in, uh, Open Square. Um, and the, we we looked at the space over here, and it would, it would accommodate their needs.
So, um, the following slides here, which I think you have in your package, are just my, I would call them sketches of how the, the, um, program of transitions and of the school department would fit into this building. Um, but what we don't have yet, what I'm working on, is the sort of comparable version of what this would look like for, uh, fifty-seventh Suffolk. So, um, but I think probably, given that it's late and people are tired, I'm sure maybe we should just skip to, um, the numbers. Um, Rory, which is, I think, the second to last slide. Um, so this slide, so, um, again, for the last meeting, we brought to the finance committee sort of three different options for comparison. One was to take Metcalf as the location for the, um, for the school department. It's not a great locations for transitions, so it would, it only solves one of those problems of, you know, getting off of paying rent. The second would be, um, you know, buying fifty-seventh Suffolk and renovating it. And the third one was buying two seventy, two seventeen to two twenty-five High Street, which is the two addresses of the two-story and the six-story building. And, you know, looking at the compare, you know, at a very high level of the comparative cost to renovate them fully. So, um, there's a lot of guesswork in this, I'll be honest, but I in order to make a comparison, I researched a likely cost for the renovation of buildings of this age. Um, they have different issues. One needs a roof, the other one does need a roof, one needs an elevator, the other. No, this, but in general, what I did was I used three hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot as a renovation cost so that we were sort of comparing them on an equal footing. Um, which I think is a sort of comfortable, safe number. And what you're seeing here then is really the difference between the size and the, the amount of space that needs to be renovated. So the biggest building is fifty-seventh Suffolk. So if you were to replace the mechanical systems and upgrade the electrical and do the other things that would be triggered by that work, um, that, I believe that would be in the neighborhood of eighteen million dollars. Um, it, you know, again, it does have, that building would have rental space within it, so it would have other income. And obviously, because it's the biggest building, it would probably have the highest utility costs. By comparison, two twenty-five High Street, smaller footprint, fewer square feet, does allow you to wrap in transitions, so you sort of, you, you would get rid of both leases if you, if you did that. Um, and, you know, as, as Rory noted in this presentation, it is, it is vacant. Therefore, probably a little cheaper to renovate, because you're renovating it as vacant space. Rory, you wanna talk about this one?
Just a quick question.
Oh, yeah, Howie.
Yeah, just a quick question. We would also lose, we would also lose fifty-five thousand, approximately fifty-five thousand dollars in real estate tax by buying this property?
That, that is, uh, that is correct. That's what this next slide is, um.
Oh, I didn't realize you had a-
No, 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 yeah, we actually, we, we, to be, you know, fully transparent, of course, we, that we need to take that into account. Um, so it's, uh, sixty-four thousand.
Sixty-four.
Uh, sixty-four is the, uh, is the number. But when you look at how much we pay currently in leases that we would have as an automatic savings, we would have a budgetary savings, and keep in mind, this is all on the city side. We'd have a budgetary savings of one fifty-seven, eight oh five.
Um, right, but with the Metcalf School, there wouldn't be any loss in revenue.
That is true.
And I think that, I've toured the Metcalf School. I think there would be room there for the Transition Academy.
Not transitions and central office. Yeah, I mean, they would be in a basement. I, I I don't think they should be. Um, and the other thing I want to note about these numbers is that, uh, you know, the, the current landlord has had com- you know, has been trying to get Josh to come to the table to talk about increasing the rent. Um, because the, the rate that we're, we've been paying at fifty-seventh Suffolk, he inherited from Appleton Corporation, and and they were generous and hadn't, you know, they hadn't been increasing our rent every year. So I think what we're paying for rent right now is well below the market from what the landlord is telling me. And I think he's telling me that because he, he has plans to increase the, the, uh, the rent. But, um, you know, he, he, he reached out, he wants to have a conversation with the mayor as well, but I um, I know he, he's aware of all this, that, the, these conversations that we're having.
One other quick question. How about the Transitions Academy? Would it fit at Dean?
When we get, when we get our, the new middle school and move STEM out of there, yeah, thirty, the, space-wise, it would fit, for sure.
Okay, just food for thought, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I think the ch- challenge here is a lot of, it's a lot of different potential levers. Um, and it's kind of hard to figure out what, what is the right thing to stay focused on. Um, so, but I, my purpose here is to, um, confirm if there's anything else that the, the, you folks are interested, besides the things that um, the finance committee raised at the last meeting, which is asking us to look, do a more specific comparison of fifty-seventh Suffolk and two twenty-five High, including looking at utilities and and potential rental income at fifty-seventh Suffolk, which does not exist, I don't believe, at two twenty-five High.
Okay, uh, Millie? Okay, uh, Millie?
So in regards to the transitions program, um, in my personal opinion, with all due respect, uh, Mr. Grady, Councilor Grady, um, they have been moved before. Number two, let's not continue looking at them as students. They're individual adults, um, with disabilities, who, once that they have done their four years within the high school, it's like telling them, you still gotta keep staying there. For them, this, of being out of the high school setting and be, and being out in a different location where they're developing the skills that they need, um, to be able to either live independently or live in a, in a shared location, um, that's meaningful to them, because to them, it's like they're giving back, and like, they're more adults and not being looked at as a, as a high school student. Um, I know that they still do participate in, in, you know, um, the Special Olympic programs and, and, um, I can't even get the name right. Um, where you have the high school students and, and the students from the-
Unified sports?
Unified sports.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't think putting them back into a setting such as, um, Dean would be in their best interest. Like, for them, once they, so they cross the stage, they're not accepting a diploma. It's a certificate of attendance. Once they've done that, it's a, now it's their next step, just like all the other students are looking at their next phase in life. Keeping them after they've gone and walked their, their, the, across the stage, having them continue going back, and then they're facing their peers. Yeah. I don't think that it's appropriate. As a, as an, in, as a parent that has had my own kids, um, with, um, in special education, um, I wouldn't, even though they're not at the level of a severe medical need, it's more, uh, mental health, I don't think that that would be appropriate. That's what we have, um, the, um, multicultural center for them to be connected to that. We have the mass rehab. Um, that's what we should be looking and keeping them with.
That was part of the reason they moved them out of Dean. That program actually used to be at Dean, um, and there was a lot of advocacy to say, like, this isn't working, there, we're not really getting them ready for life. We're just keeping them in high school. I wasn't a part of that decision, but that, you know, that, they were there before, and, and I, I agree with you, Mildred. That's how it would feel to the, to the students who graduated. They would still feel like they're in high school. And I don't know that it would do justice to, to get them ready for, to, for independent life.
Rosalie, did you have any final thoughts?
She just answered my question.
Okay. All right, well, we've, uh, got our feet wet on the issue of the purchase of two twenty-five High Street. Um, and obviously, you can have you, to your ears content of, uh, discussions, thoughts, and, uh, very robust conversation, and I'm sure we're gonna continue to have at finance on this topic. One and all are invited. Uh, next round, March twenty-sixth. Sixth, uh, March, uh, will be, uh, round two of that discussion, where it's, uh, I believe the sole item, as Rory directly pointed out. So, uh, without further ado, this item has been complied with. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. That is the end of our agenda. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Um, we do, actually, I'm gonna reconsider our vote to adjourn for just one minute. All in favor of reconsidering our motion to adjourn? Thank you. Um, how often do we want to meet, team? Uh, do we, are we thinking maybe every two months, every three months? What do you, what do you recommend?
Every, um, yeah.
Uh, Millie?
I think every two months. I mean, I don't want to run into this thing again, where we're, we have on an agenda something from, from a year ago. I want to make sure, and again, it's about transparency, and it's about working together. We want to get our, our, our schools back, then we should be working together and looking at the needs for our students.
So you, so Millie, how about you and I will connect and start looking at some dates, and obviously, key people like Anthony, you'll be in charge of making sure we get on Anthony's calendar. And, uh, so let's look, uh, for, uh, a May meeting, okay, for our next one?
Just before-
Yes, Rosalie?
Just before we close out, um, Sunday, we have a parade, um, that we're going to. So I want to just make my point real quick, okay? It says, um, and I'm, these guys have heard it before. "When the parade is over," I wrote this point.
Oh, okay.
"When the parade is over and the crowds have all dispersed, I wonder what will happen to all the acts rehearsed. When the band is silent and the players all go home, what happens to the instruments? Were they rented, or were they owned? The marches and the twirlers were having so much fun. The streets, once lined with people laughing, has subsided like the sun. The children were all clapping and laughing at the clowns. Although I see some smiles, but mostly I see frowns. As the families leave for home, someone shouts out a cheer, 'Hey, hey, don't look sad, the parade comes back next year.'"
There you go. How about that?
Thank you.
We have our own Maya Angelo right here in, uh, in Holyoke. Yes, Ron?
Whoever I want to talk to, uh, in the renovations of two twenty-five High Street.
Yeah?
Before anything is done, who is gonna pay for the upgrade of it? The safety hazards of it?
Please come down on the twenty-sixth and give us your full opinion on all of those topics. We're gonna get into all that on the twenty-sixth. Yep. All right, uh, renewing our motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Very nice meeting. Nice job, everyone.